Call the July 2nd City Council meeting to order. Need to read the decorum statement. Well, welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them beside me. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism. However, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warnings, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers. And with that, Susan?
Keep forgetting that we're not respecting the flag, our nation, or having prayer prior to jumping up. Sorry. Good afternoon. First thing is, is we need to redo that.
Name and address from the record, please?
No, sir, that's not required by law. And I've written you about that. If you read my emails, you'll know. I quoted and cited the law. You're not required to sign in at the stadium at the front and give that information. You're not, you can give Mickey Mouse, or you don't have to give anything at all. And the lawyer knows this, and so does everyone up there, because I wrote everyone. And it's also on the internet. We're not required to give our name or our address, and we don't even have to be local residents. All that is in the letters I've written you, and everyone up here knows it. So you can't do that. And if you'd read my emails once in a while, you'd know it. I had written you and everyone regarding an issue in last time's meeting about the long-term relief for the lakes. And I asked that it be pulled from the consent agenda. That should have been sufficient. I shouldn't have had to get up, jump up and run up here and say, please pull it. Over here, we could not hear Commissioner Nesta's request for whatever number he said to pull. We could just tell that he was saying something, because again, we've repeatedly stated, the speaker doesn't work. And it wasn't, you did not repeat what he requested, and it wasn't until after the vote that you said what he wanted to pull. So I did not know that my request in email to all of the council was not respected, because I wrote you, and apparently you didn't read it, or didn't respect my request at that time, and was not honored. I should not have had to get up and request it, because I requested it to you in writing the week prior. All of those lakes need to be thoroughly tested. All of the lakes in the chain currently now need to be tested and haven't been. And I've told you that before. But you are not reading my emails. You're not reading other people's emails. And that results in problems in here and in the running of the city. But we need to make a change, saying that everybody has to do that, and the introduction to the meeting needs to, comments is, and demanding that people give their name and address for the record is wrong. And I've said that before, and I've written you all about it. And if I need to print it in the newspaper, I will print it in the newspaper. Thank you.
Leroy Bell. Last meeting, it came from the dice that I didn't care about this city. Just because I disagreed with the hustler that's coming up here exploiting little black boys to get money. Yes, I agree. I don't care if you did work up under Rod Love. You probably did. And for a teacher that over 20 years of education saying that a kid learned better on the outside of a classroom is just stupid. I put up on my page, Leroy Bell, go watch the video of Mr. Love, Hesekat Bradford, and Mina Robinson, speak about how great Doug Bangston is, how great Dan Webster is, how great and kind and loving this Bryant Nelson. These are the ministerial alliances saying how great they is in the community. Why can't they open up? Why don't you churches open up the pews and have education there? But yet, and still, you come up here and exploit the little black kids. What about the little kids like Bryant Nelson? Y'all talking about the London integrity and stuff. Maybe if you had to have a program like that back then, maybe Bryant Nelson probably would have came out a little better. But here's the thing. It makes no sense. He said the only thing that he wanted was a building, but mostly, he said it was virtually. But why? This is a way to hustle money. All you got to do is listen to the old Brokeback Mountain show that they have every Monday. Yeah, I said it, and I meant it. And get ready. People getting to quit, quit it. And if you didn't understand what I said before, get ready for the baby ball.
Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Ridge. Good afternoon, everyone. This message is for everybody that can hear my voice and everybody that's sitting here in the chamber. If you look around and you see what's going on in our country, now you know why I come up here and I repeat the same thing over and over and over again. Because at some point, we have to challenge our moral conscience. And so I say again, the City of Apopka, the state of Florida, and our country is in a national crisis, because too many good people are sitting around watching bad things happen, happening, and not doing anything about it, being completely silent and looking the other way when they know better. And we teach our kids better. It's time for us to stand up against hate, corruption, and racism. When we stand up and we do the pledge, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, we know that's not truth. That's not true. But we say it so proudly, because that's where we are at now. And so when you hear me say this comment that when we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth to the point the truth doesn't matter. And that's where we're at now. The truth don't really matter. When you hear the truth, it don't bother you no more, because you don't been desensitized to the, to the, to the situation. So as a country, is we gonna get better, that has to change. And for all Americans, all citizens, we have to realize this one thing. Until we start electing our elected officials, we have the power to change everything that's happening in our country. We, the citizen, the citizen is the most powerful person in this country. But for some reason, you've been manipulated to understand that you don't have any power. So you get up and you complain about things that you have the power to change. And what I want you to understand is, when you come down to during the local elections, I want you to go back and look at the qualifications to run for any elected office. And then you look at the people that we are electing to office, and that will change your concept. But we have to understand that these things matter. Principles matter. Integrity matters. Honesty matters. Accountability matters. Responsibility matters. Morals matter. Ethics matters. Matter. Character matters. Procedures matter. Leadership matters. And laws matter. And all God's people matter. When we take that concept on, we will change the, permanently change the status and the progress of this country. Thank you.
Rod Olson of Apopka. Upcoming, this upcoming week, we have the budget workshops again. I hope it's not the dog and pony show that we saw last year. Last year before the meetings, I asked one of you to ask the questions whether or not for each department head, whether they had the people, the supplies, materials, and equipment they need to do the job. You didn't ask that question. I did. And only three of your department heads answered affirmatively. Garbage in, garbage out. Failing to plan is planning to fail. The only amendments that should be going should be ongoing emergencies only. Last year, and the new budget year started October 1st, October 1st, first meeting, what are you doing? You're already moving money. It's on the agenda again today. You do every month. You do it twice a month. You do that. And it's because the budgeting wasn't done properly to begin with. Infrastructure. I made a record request, which I got a bunch of, in March. I got a bunch of garbage in April and trailed into May. You have 88 positions as the end of May that were open in the city. That's 17.5% or nearly 1 in 5 of the employees of Apopka are positioned vacancies. We're not getting the job done. We are reactive, not proactive. We need to shift that. We need to conduct the staff survey, find out why people are leaving, find out why we can't keep people to come in. New development, shifting gears here, new development. We don't have the infrastructure. We clearly don't have the staff. 88 openings. That's 8-8. 17.5%. Roads, sidewalks. We have water issues, water pressure for reclaimed water. We have water issues across the city. We have flooding that's not being taken care of. We don't have the staff to take care of it. We are more developer focused than we are resident focused. Oh, well, let's put another 5,000 homes in along Kelly Park. What the heck? What are the road plans for it? Oh, we don't have a road coordinator anymore. So it doesn't get done. It means that all the people that are currently driving are gonna have to put up with more traffic, because we have failed to plan. My hope is for the 2025, 2026 budget, one of you will ask that question of every department head. And if the department head cannot answer affirmatively, then you need to start looking at yourself and looking at them as to what do we need to get the job done right? Thank you.
Albert McCamese, 603 Golden Gem Road. Just to echo with Sylvester Hall's sentiments, and also the sentiments of Rod Olson. Facts do matter, and the infrastructure does matter. The problem, as I see it, is we don't really have much of a clue where we stand on infrastructure just now. And it really doesn't matter who takes over the helm at the next election. Unless what we're doing is based on facts, we're gonna be no better off. So how many people here could actually give me an honest answer about the condition of the sewage system? We have over 170 lift stations. Some of those lift stations are 50 or 60 years old. They're really not meant to be still being serviced the way they are. They need new pumps. They need a whole lot of new things. At past meetings, the city's own staff have said it could cost up to half a million dollars to recommission a lift station. Bearing in mind that you have 170 lift stations, how much money would the city need to budget for that infrastructure? How much money do you need to budget for Golden Gem Road? Well, that depends how we tackle it. How much money do we need for water meters? How much money do we need for new wells? Here's the problem that we have. We're shooting in the dark every time we come here. Because I'm sorry, commissioners, but you don't know the answers. You don't know the answers, because we don't have the staff in the city just now who are department heads to answer what you really require to know. You're dependent to a large degree on social media coming to tell you what we think. And unfortunately, a lot of us in social, social media have got a bad reputation. A lot of people don't think we know what we're talking about. But the fact of the matter is, I can look around here today, and I can see half a dozen people that I would choose to be working for the city rather than the, the people who are already here. There's something called the, the Peter Syndrome. And what it's about is you can only promote someone, someone from within over and over again, until they come to a point where they've exceeded what their abilities are. So I think that's a problem that we have to resolve. What we should really be looking to do is to appoint new people from out with the city. People who are eminently qualified to be able to give you answers. The other thing is, I'm happy to come down here every week, and I'm happy to try and give you solutions to your problems. But I really don't get the chance, because nobody is here to answer my questions. I can't address the department heads. If I can't ask questions, how do you know if those questions are relevant? Commissioners, you need to support the people more. People like us who do know what we're speaking about. Thank you.
Well, we get prayer and pledge and invocation. Commissioner Smith?
Our fathers, once again, that we come before your presence, come and say thank you for the minute blessing bestowed upon us. Thank you for this opportunity to be servants of this city. We ask for your continued lead, us, guide us, and direct our path. Bless all that are gathered here today. In thy son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On July 2nd, 1776, the Second Continental Congress Assembly in Philadelphia formally adopted Richard Henry Lee's Resolution for Independence from Great Britain. The vote is unanimous, with only New York abstaining. Two days later, on July 4th, 1776, delegates from the 13 colonies adopted a Declaration of Independence, a formal statement ending the colony's allegiance to Great Britain. Fact of the day.
All right. Got a set of minutes from June 18th, 2025. Look for a motion to approve with those changes?
Well, the, what doesn't need to be changed on the front is that it said that I approved the minutes previously, which I did not vote on at all. You didn't give me the opportunity to. So that needs to be adjusted appropriately in those minutes.
So four, four, four and one abstain? Is that what you want?
You didn't give me the opportunity to vote. So I don't, I don't know what that needs to be reflected as, but I didn't get the opportunity to vote. So however you want to have those recorded properly, that needs to be adjusted before we approve those minutes.
Okay. For motion to approve with those changes?
Settle.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Second by Commissioner Smith. All who's in favor. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Bradley. Okay, just, just for the agenda, just a review?
Do you want to do the employee awards first?
Agenda review.
Okay. I have two items. Requesting polling, number three on consent, and number five on business. In our local agreement with Orange County, we're asking to continue that one to August 6th. We have a meeting with the county on the 7th.
So business item five is being continued to August 6th, and then we're polling completely consent item number three?
Yes.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So what's happening with that?
Bring it back at later date.
Is there a date certain that we've already decided?
No, we need some more time to review that.
What, what additional items are there to review?
The agreement.
Okay.
All right. Looking for motion to...
We don't have an, are you following the agenda? Employee recognition is supposed to be two up.
Yep. I understand. Looking for motion to table the consent, consent agenda, agenda item number three, and number five to date certain of August 6th. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Anderson. All who's in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Joe?
Okay, so today is the end of the quarter, so we are going to, we have an opportunity to recognize our employees for their years of service. We have quite a few employees that are here today, which is great news. As I call their name, they're gonna come up, possibly greet commissioners, come over here, get their pens and certificates, and then we'll hold on for a picture after. So first, we have Jody Rinkley. She's with the city clerk's office. Jody came in, she's on vacation today, so she, she made sure I knew that, so.
Came right from the pool.
She did. Comes from the pool. Jody was born in Florida and raised in Apopka. She is a graduate of Apopka High School and obtained a Bachelor of Applied Science in Supervision and Management from Daytona, from Daytona State College. She's currently working on her municipal clerk certification, certification from the Florida Association of City Clerks. Jody began her career with the city on May 26, 2010, as a communications technician within the police department. On December 11, 2017, she transferred to the position of Code Enforcement Secretary. Then on December 18, 2023, she was promoted to her current position of Deputy City Clerk within the city clerk's office. When not at the office, Jody enjoys cooking for friends, which is true. She does bring in some food, coworkers, and family. On the weekends, she loves going boating and having cookouts. So next, we have Jessica Pugh, Finance Department, Procurement Division. Jessica forced all of her employees to come over here and support. They, they told me. They wrote a, you know, complaint against you. So Jessica was raised in both upstate New York and the Florida Panhandle. She moved to central Florida in 2002 and received a bachelor's degree in business management from UCF. Jessica began her career with the City of Apopka on June 29, 2015, as the Assistant to the City Administrator. On November 12, 2018, she transferred to the Finance Department as the Purchasing Administrator. Then on April 3, 2022, she was promoted to her current position as Purchasing Manager. Jessica looks back fondly at the many successful projects she has been a part of throughout the city, as well as meaningful relationships she has built over the years. When not at the office, you will find Jessica enjoying life, peace, travel, and adventure with her husband of 19 years and their, I don't know if I could say this, sassy little pup. Now, Jessica wrote this. Macy. So I don't know if Macy is a little dog or a rottweiler or something. I don't know. Okay, she's just sad. So she also enjoys spending time with her supportive family members and wonderful friends, and participating in activities that include wildlife and interacting with animals. So next, we have two individuals that are not present. Joshua Bolander, Fire Department. He's celebrating five years. Timothy Sundal, Sunball, Fire Department, celebrating five years. We have Niles Sturm, the Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services Division, and he's celebrating 20 years. And Niles also forced his family to come today, so. Lieutenant Sturm was born and raised in Orlando and is a graduate of Dr. Phillips High School. He went on to earn his paramedic state license and also hold several special operations certificates. Lieutenant Sturm began working with the city as a volunteer firefighter. On April 19, 2005, he was hired full-time as a firefighter first class in suppression. After successfully completing the paramedic program, he transferred to the EMS division as a paramedic on December 11, 2016, and was promoted to the rank of fire engineer on December 3, 2017. Then on October 29, 2023, he was promoted to his current rank of fire lieutenant. When not at the station, Lieutenant Sturm enjoys spending time with his beautiful wife of 24 years, Patricia, their two daughters, Nyla and Adriana, and their dog, Nova. He also enjoys playing golf and pickleball. So next is Caleb Sabat Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Department. He is not present today. He's celebrating five years. Next, we have Xavier Lugo, Parks and Recreation Department, Grounds and Athletics Division. He's celebrating 10 years. Xavier began his career with the City of Apopka on May 24, 2015, as a Maintenance Worker 1 with the Recreation Department. On March 13, 2016, he was reclassified to Maintenance Worker 2, and then again reclassified to his current position as Parks Worker. So next, we have Anthony Goldsmith. He is not present today. Public, oh, yes? Okay. Sorry, I didn't write you down, so. So that's a great surprise. Thank you. Waste Water Treatment Plant Division, five years. Anthony began working for the City of Apopka on May 4, 2020, as a Maintenance Worker 1 in the Utility Plant Maintenance Division of Public Services. On December 23, 2020, he was promoted to the position of Water Plant Operator Training in the Waste Water Treatment Plant Division. And on June 15, 2022, he was promoted to Waste Water Plant Operator C. Then on June 15, 2023, he was promoted to his current position of Waste Water Plant Operator B. Next is Marlin Harris. Who is here? Okay. Public Services Department, Design Engineering Division, 20 years. So Marlin was born in Orlando and raised in Apopka. He is a graduate of Apopka High School and joined the ironworks local 808 prior to beginning his career with the City of Apopka. Marlin began working with the city on April 25, 2005, as a Utility Service Worker 2 within the Water Distribution Maintenance Division of the Public Services Department. On February 19, 2024, he was promoted to his current position of Construction Inspector. Marlin feels that everything he had done in his 20 years of service with the city prepared him for his, for this position. Additionally, he appreciates all of the coworkers he has met over the years and the relationships they have built. In his off time, Marlin loves getting into the car with no destination in mind. In his off time, Marlin loves getting into the car with no destination in mind and exploring new areas in Florida. That could be dangerous if you run out of gas in certain areas. So that is our, um, pen ceremony, uh, the, the, uh, participants. So if you would like to take a picture, that would be great, so, yep.
Which one is this on the agenda?
This is, um...
Alright, we've got, um, four consent agenda items, one, two, four and five. Does anybody need to, either from the dais or from the, uh, public, need to pull any of those four items?
Yeah, before we jump in, didn't we, usually when we table something, and it's been on the agenda, we still give the opportunity for public to comment on it.
Sure.
So, I think if we're gonna table the two, we need to, if public does want to speak about it, and I have a couple of questions too, just to understand, um, both, uh, what is in table, just so we can understand that trajectory of both, I think that'd be valuable. So, so number three on the consent agenda, I think, needs to have a public comment, period.
Alright, so look for motion to approve consent agenda items one, two, four and five. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Alright, uh, number three, Florida Economic Consortium, the one we've...
Yeah, that's where we're doing...
Yeah.
Mayor, you, at the beginning of each meeting, hold up, she need to sit down and listen to my comment. She need to sit, that's disrespectful. I can wait. I'll wait.
No, that, no, we can wait, I'm, he's here to speak to everybody on the dais.
Pardon me? No, I, I'll wait, you can't do this. I came here, I came here to speak to all five, and all five were present.
Maybe we need to take a five-minute break then, if one of the commissioners need to take a break then?
I think we're fine. So you can speak to the four?
No, we'll take a break.
Well, he's taking a five-minute break, I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait till after the break. I'll wait till after the break. He just called for a break.
He doesn't get to call for a break.
You know, this, this shows the public just how much that this woman is for Rod Love and you is shilling him. This, this go further to prove just how that you is filling these preacher's pocket with money over here. This go show how that you are filling the pocket of your friend over the citizen in Apopka. You is a piece of trash, along with this woman right here. And you gonna let her disrespect a citizen? And you gonna stand up there and look like a goofing, a goofball, what you are? It's a shame, Alexander Smith, Brian Nelson, Diane Bellasquare and Nadia Anderson. I pray that your ass don't get elected come March, because you is a disgrace to Apopka. You are disgrace to the race. And I meant that, with every fiber of my body, every, everything that I can muster up, and people can see just how corrupt. And I, 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 I don't even have any word for you, man.
Mayor, can we discuss decorum? I mean, you, you read the decorum statement, but are not applying it to anyone?
Well, you can look at me, it, it don't, it don't bother me, Mr. Smith, it don't bother me, because you have shown your true colors.
Come on, we need to keep this to, to the...
Wait, wait, you, well, I tell you what, you couldn't keep her in the seat? You couldn't keep her in the seat now? You gonna make, you gonna have her disrespect me? She disrespect herself when she came in to tell me she worked up under Rod Love. She disrespect herself when she said she worked for him, when he been fired from the state. But yet and still, you wanna pack money in his pocket? You give him money, you just, uh, uh, who the Advent Health just fixed up a media center over in New Hope, with the ethnic violation against this clown here. Why don't you open up the pews? If the little black children can't read, it's simply because they ain't got nobody to leave. Man, y'all are, and you is a sorry sack of shit.
With four degrees in education and having worked with the low, lowest educated kids and the lowest IQ kids for a great deal of my educational career, and working with grants, I am highly concerned about the fact that the current administration at the federal level just cut all grants to after-school and summer camp in the last twenty-four hours. That means all of the needy kids whose parents don't have money for after-school care, those kids are gonna end up on the streets. That's gonna increase our police action, kids accessible to gangs and to, um, human trafficking. Kids are gonna be, we're gonna have more latchkey kids. Now, I don't know this man or his programs, I don't know anything other than I saw that there was some, that his, he needs to be vetted more when it comes to his, um, licensing, et cetera, which all of your organizations that you give any money to or associate with, or lend your property to, needs to be closely vetted for their, um, state license, their state check of charity, um, how often they're late filing their taxes, if they filed their IRS this year, if they filed it on time, if they did it in June or not. These things need to be checked and, and followed through, like I check a lot of businesses, and why they were late, and who made what kind of income off of the charity. But my greatest concern is those kids, and I posted it today online, is that when the federal government cuts off all of summer school for charities and all of summer camps, Apopka's gonna be in a desperate place. So, if we do the right thing and do the right vetting, it may be a good thing to find charities, not just one, but charities to put kids into summer camp and after-school activities. It doesn't have to be churches. We need them to have a variety of places to go, and people who have been teachers know that they need hands-on activities, but our biggest concern is keeping them off the street, streets and keeping them occupied and keeping them learning.
Albert McKimmy, three six oh three, Golden Gem Road. We're always gonna have contentious and emotive issues down here, but really, we need to really look at having Robert's Rules of Order for here. It's been mentioned a couple of times lately. We used to be called the Peanut Gallery. In recent months, I've tried to come here and be nothing but constructive, but when I see what happens here today, why, why do I want to be part of moving forward into greater Apopka? It really disheartened me what I see here today. There's no reason for what just happened. I said earlier, we really need to have the constituents of Apopka all on side, and today, there's thousands of people, we'll review the video feed that came from here. How many businesses do you really think want to be involved with a city that behaves the way we do?
We need to state of the issue, the issue is about the consortium though, if that's what you want to speak about, that's, that's the...
Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Ridge. It is always a positive when anybody want to come in and improve, uh, Apopka situation. But as you staff, as leaders, we gotta know what works and what don't work. And a lot of times, we don't even spend no time vetting anything, because stuff that comes out during the city council meeting should have already been vetted, where it shouldn't have been an issue once it got to this level. I have been fighting this battle in the city of Apopka for over twenty years. I retired out of the Navy in two thousand and three. If you go back and you look at a film, you'll see where I was fighting the battle when we was having so many murders over in South Apopka. You'll see my face on the local news. So when it comes to the prison pipeline for second and third graders, if you're not at reading level, that's where you end up at. But here's the thing, that's not a, that's not a black thing, that's a society thing. It's not only black kids that end up. So, it shouldn't be a special program where we point out it's just for black kids. And you always hear me talk about, there's a cause and there's an effect on everything in life. And when we start, started addressing the cause, we will come up with permanent solutions. But as long as we address the effects, we're gonna continue to put bad knees on the problem. And that's not gonna, that's not gonna work. Anytime somebody come here and present anything to you guys, they should have receipts. They should have receipts that you can vet. And if this organization has quote-unquote been working in the community, doing things, he should have receipts showing where his program turned around second and third graders that was having reading issues. If he don't have that, he don't have no receipts. And these are the things, when I say we normalize the abnormal, these things in leadership are just one-on-one, and mostly it's common sense, but we're not taking that approach. And that, in returns, hurt the whole city, and it hurts the, hurts the residents, uh, period. Because we remember there was a shooting over there at the amphitheater. Bullets don't have nobody name on it. Bullet don't have no, bullets don't have what's your class, whether you're rich, whether you're poor, it don't have no names on it. But these are the effects that happen when we don't do our due diligence as leaders. Everything start with you guys, you are the safety conscious for the city of Apopka. Please take that in consideration.
Anybody else? Okay.
So, and because it's here and I want to discuss this specific topic, is, the goal here is to get a, is it a use agreement? Is that what we're working on?
No, it's a larger program with the FEC. So there, we do need more time to review the agreement that was sent our way.
So it's not what we, what was presented last, last meeting then?
It's more extensive.
Okay, then hopefully we'll have a new updated presentation, kind of the updated requests, not just the agreement then?
Correct, we'll need, we need more time to put that together.
Okay, and, and I guess where did the change come in, or why was there a change?
I just, I got, had a, the discussion with DJJ, uh, on Monday, and they were to give us what the agreement would look like. I thought it was a one pager, here's kind of what we're, we're hoping to accomplish, and it came out and it's fifteen or twenty pages, and I said, well, we can't, we can't bring that forward without Rod Love here to discuss it, and so we just, you know, and are legal to look at it, so it was a...
Who sent that agreement? Who sent that agreement?
Rod Love.
Oh, I thought, the EJJ?
Well, no, no, it, it came from DJJ, Travis Logan.
Can we get a copy of that, please?
Yeah.
Okay, just to understand again, what the expectations are there?
Yep.
And then two, again, you read a decorum statement at the beginning of this meeting, very detailed, very specific, but you're not applying it equally and equitably to everybody. Do, do you plan to apply it, or is it just as needed or as you feel is appropriate? We have, you, we approved in a decorum statement, addressing the public, things of that nature, and you're not applying it equitably to anybody, you just didn't do it then? Do we need a new decorum statement, updated one? Are you gonna apply it or not apply it?
I think we're good.
We're not good. These meetings are getting out of control because you're not applying a decorum, you're not applying what you read every single meeting. So, are you gonna start now, or just continue to ignore it?
Well, well, it's funny that you say that, because you got, you got one, one of your supporters that doesn't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is fine, that's, that's okay. You got one that's always disruptive, and you had another one last week, or two weeks ago, that, that thinks that, well, and this one today, that wanted to, to curse in front of the, the mic.
And you don't do, you don't do anything about it?
Well, that, there's your supporters, I would think you'd say, hey, why don't you...
If you want me to start leading the meetings, I'm happy to do it.
No, 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 just why don't you ask, why don't you ask your, your friends to, hey, why don't you knock it off?
Then why do you read a decorum statement if you're not gonna apply it? Just apply the decorum statement and we can keep moving.
How many have you seen of my people that, that, that treat the, the, uh, the city council?
I've got, uh, police reports, if you want to see those, of your people, uh, I got plenty of stuff, that may not happen right here, but it happens elsewhere.
Okay, so the decorum statement within city council is, is...
You're the one that applies it, are you gonna apply it or not? That's the simple question, are you gonna apply it or not?
Question is, are you gonna keep your people under control?
I don't, my people...
That aren't, that aren't following decorum.
My people, you're the chair of this meeting, if you want me to run it, I will apply the decorum statement equally, you don't apply it. I'm asking, you read it every meeting, just apply it. Are you gonna do that or not?
So, so what you're saying is you want me to take care of your people, then that, that...
I want you to do your job, your job that you were sworn to do. Do your job.
Okay, alright.
Are you gonna apply it?
Sure. Thank you. Okay, Bradley.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Bradley Williams, interim city administrator. Uh, first item on the business agenda today is the, uh, confirmation of our new Economic Development Director, Ms. Anjournet Forbes, she's here with us today. City conducted a comprehensive recruitment process identifying, uh, quality candidates to lead the economic, economic development department. Their role is critical in advancing the city of Apopka's strategic goals around business retention, attraction, workforce development and community revitalization. Uh, Ms. Forbes was selected following a competitive selection process, uh, we had thirty-four applicants, conducted eight interviews over two different sessions. And I'll let Ms. Forbes come up and introduce herself here in a minute, if she'd like, but I'll give some of the highlights. She has over nineteen years of experience, uh, in economic and business development. Her current role is with the city of St. Cloud, Florida, for at least one more day, I think? One more day? As the Economic Development Director, uh, in that role, she also is the Director of their CRA program. She holds a Master of Public Administration from Nova Southeastern, a Master of Economic Development Practitioner from University of Southern Mississippi. is an FRA redevelopment professional, a lean six sigma yellow belt from the Florida Gulf Coast University, and is a development finance certified professional. So we're very excited to have her joining the team with us here in Apopka. And I'll let her give a few brief words and our recommended motion is to confirm her as our new economic, economic development director.
Good af- good afternoon, Antranet Forbes. My comments will be extremely brief. I simply want to say that I'm very excited to join the city of Apopka. I've spoken to each one of you individually. I enjoy learning to about Apopka. I also want to hear what your priorities are so we can move forward together and figure out how we can make Apopka even better than it is. I've said to you all individually and I'll say publicly, my first priority is always to our local businesses first. How do we help them grow? How do we help them expand? And then our second one is business retention because we can only bring new businesses in when we work with our existing ones and make sure that they are thriving and successful. So with that, I am available for any questions, but I'm certainly excited to join the city.
Any questions?
No, I just want to say, and I appreciate the time you spent with me yesterday. That was, I think, very valuable and it was great to connect on that level. Your resume speaks for itself, obviously. Well, before you even get to the room, it, it speaks for itself. So it's very cool to see your passion for this, uh, your expertise and knowledge base in this. So thank you for that. Some of the things that you, um, had spoke about was, you know, retail leakage while we were meeting, things of that nature. Um, obviously you just spoke about how important it is to focus on our businesses that we have now.
Yes.
As well as new businesses. Um, can you just speak a little bit more to that and how you can, um, just some ideas or what you've found successful that you'd bring here for, for us?
Sure. So one of the biggest things, and I hope this volume works. So one of the biggest things with our local businesses, many times they don't know what economic development is or how it actually can help them. And there are several programs that are available, some financial, but mostly technical that can help our existing businesses. One of the things that we found particularly during COVID is that many existing business owners are so business, so busy running their existing business that they are not necessarily keen on some of the programs that are available toward them at no cost to help them learn how to pivot. So for example, in St. Cloud, we had a lot of our downtown businesses that were relying upon walk-in traffic and their usual customers. And so we had to create programs to show them e-commerce, how to do financial transactions online, how to advertise their business using third party. And so we were able to do that through our partnerships. We have great partners in the area that their whole mission is to help our businesses and we already fund them through our tax dollars. So why not make those resources available? Another program that we have is simply bringing some of those resource providers in-house at city hall. A lot of our businesses don't have the time or even the luxury to commute further than I'd say about 20 minutes outside of their geographic area. So why can't we bring those things in-house? So one of the things that I, I think I do a good job in is being very creative and finding ways that we can use what are usually limited resources, but to maximize and leverage those resources with some of our other partners in order to make a bigger impact.
Absolutely. And I love that. Again, I think just your expertise and you've, you've navigated some dynamic, um, changes in the market and things of that nature. So that's really cool to see that you, you've done that already. You, you were doing the CDBG grant in St. Cloud. That's, you're not going to be doing that here, correct?
I was not told what I was going to do.
When she gets her, we got a bunch of things we got to kind of talk about what, what she will help either, you know, directly or indirectly. So that's, we're still to be determined, her, you know, her ultimate role here.
So I will reply that's usually under the other duties as assigned. I will make my knowledge available as needed. Um, so under my existing role, yes, I handle the CRA, economic development, and I'm going to spell out the acronym for those unfamiliar. It is the Community Development Block Grant. It is a fairly funded program from the housing and urban development where you get funding for low-income persons or low-income areas. I also manage the SHIP with a P fund, which stands for the State Housing Initiative Program that is funding for down payment assistance, for seniors looking to do rehab and repairs, emergency repairs due to hurricane and natural disasters. At one point, I also managed our seaplane, um, base. Occasionally I did some events and, and other duties as assigned. It's all about leveraging the resources you have in order to maximize the, the effect.
Absolutely. I think it's all about resourcefulness and that's, I, again, you, you keep speaking of that, which I appreciate. Two last questions here, uh, and we spoke about this, uh, yesterday as well. Um, for business tax receipts or BTRs, you had seen an increase when, uh, you were in St. Cloud of, was it 29%?
It was closer to 30%.
Okay. So 30% there. And are you pro, uh, BTRs?
I am pro for the data piece of it, not necessarily for the fee. So one of the hardest things when you are entering a new area is to figure out who your business community are and what their needs are. And so the registration process helps because then I'm able to identify them and then reach out, get demographic information, get sales data. If I don't, if there's no, um, registration or some way for a business to alert us that they exist, then it's, it makes it that much more difficult.
Yeah. How do you know how we can serve them properly?
Correct.
And create synergy with other businesses coming in and things of that nature.
Right. So again, it's not necessarily about the fee. It's more about getting that data because that's how you're able to extrapolate information and say, well, hey, our businesses grew by X percentage. We're also able to identify the industries of those businesses. So if we're looking to diversify, we need to know what those businesses are. You need to know whom your home-based businesses are. A lot of our home-based businesses, for example, grew during COVID because people turned their side hustles into actual businesses. Well, if you want to pull those businesses from home-based to brick and mortar, there's a process that goes with that, but we can't follow that business if we don't know how to contact them.
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate you being here today and, and I look forward to, as long as we give you your wing supply, like I said yesterday, give you the space to do what you need to do. You, you have the background and the experience to do an education and I have full faith, as long as you're able to do it, you'll do great.
Thanks. Let's get to work.
Well, I just want, last thing I wanted to bring up, it was interesting, got a call or a text yesterday from Michelle Boylan. She said, you know, she's worked with you on some, some different projects and she said, we made a great hire. So I just wanted to, you know, share, share that with you and with the, the public that, uh, Michelle Boylan thinks we, we made a good pick. And, and I, I second that, uh, that motion.
Thank you.
So anyway, with that, anybody want to speak on?
Albert McKimmy, three, six, oh, three, Golden Gem Road. It's awesome that we filled this position. Uh, and we would like to, to welcome our new employee to the city. We are very fortunate in Apopka. We have things here that other people can't buy. We have a lot of natural beauty. We have the springs. We have all sorts of things that I hope we can retain as they are. What I would like to see, and I feel a lot of the city echo this, is that we want to reduce urban sports brawl. Keep that away from the areas where we have natural beauty. The other concern that we have just now is we have a lot of warehouses. Warehouses do nothing for the city. They produce nothing, their storage space. I hope that this young lady can encourage manufacturing to come to Apopka. Because when you bring manufacturing to a city, you increase all the other facilities that are required by those.
I just want to say welcome. Your resume speaks for itself and hopefully we have a long encounter with you. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right.
Ms. Forbes, I wanted to welcome you and hope that you have an exciting career here and productive. This city has a lot of room for a lot of businesses because people are now working virtually and at home. And I used to bring a lot of businesses to town. I had a UPS store, so people worked through my store. And so I've had a physical business in town. I've had virtual businesses nearby and online. And, um, I've produced, helped a lot of businesses form. And so I hope that a lot of people get a lot of production out of the CRA, what's left, and get that money used and out of the way, but also get production out of it. And I want to see that the city of Apopka turn around. And I think that you can do that with your education and background.
All right. With that, anybody else? If not, look for a motion to approve Antranet Forbes as the city's new economic development director.
So moved.
Wow. Okay, got a motion by. Mr. Smith, all those in favor?
I'm sorry, who did you say, who did you take first?
You.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Radley.
Uh, business item two is, uh, Public Services Department reorganization and director confirmations. Upon the departure of, uh, our prior Public Works Director, uh, administration did a full operational review of public services departments and divisions. And, uh, their view included assessment of staffing operations and management of the public services divisions and resulted in a reorganization of public services into three, I'm sorry, into two separate departments, the Public Works Department and the Utilities Operations Department. Public Works Department responsibilities will include city engineering, development review engineering, utilities engineering, transportation and stormwater engineering, construction management, GIS and assets management, streets and stormwater maintenance. The Utilities Operations Department will oversee water plant operations, wastewater plant operations, plants maintenance operations, and utilities maintenance to include water, wastewater and lift stations. On review of the existing internal management, city administration, uh, has selected city engineer Vladimir, uh, Simonovsky to fill the role of Public Works Director while maintaining his role as city engineer. And Water Resources Utilities Operation Manager Glenn Brooks to fill the role of Utilities Operations Director. Both of these individuals have 20 plus years, uh, of dedicated service to the city. Mr. Simonovsky, uh, prior as a utility design manager. And, uh, Mr. Brooks, uh, through many different, uh, roles in the Water Resources Department. Most latest being the Water Resource Utilities Operations Manager overseeing all water plants, wastewater plants, and plant maintenance. So our, uh, recommended motion is to confirm Vladimir Simonovsky and as our Public Works Director and confirm Glenn Brooks as a Utility Operations Director. And I know at our staff meet, or at our agenda prep meetings, I did share, uh, the updated org charts with the reorganization. We've also implemented, um, some crew leader positions to help further provoke, uh, promote the opportunity for job growth within those departments.
Okay. Y'all have anybody, got question three to one of them?
I just have a question, and you spoke about this briefly just then, is that we had a, our previous public service director, he was here for like two weeks and then just kind of disappeared. What happened there?
So, uh, our public service director, Mr. Boodoo, when he left, the plan was to split the Public Services Department into three departments. City Engineering, Public Works, and, um, Utility Design and or Utilities. The role that, um, Mr. Momtaz was hired for was a Public Works Director position. That didn't align with when he got here, what he really wanted to do.
Did we just not articulate that, I guess, during the hiring process?
I, um, it was articulated. It just didn't align after it started.
That's a quick turnover for a department head.
Correct. So when that happened, again, we went to look and see what that operation needed. And we looked at the work units that were being completed by the Public Services Department as a whole. And tried to group these into two areas that make sense operationally. So utility operations, uh, our plant maintenance, water plant and wastewater plants, uh, did not have direct oversight over the utility lines. So the water, wastewater and reclaim lines. So those areas make sense to be together because they're all part of the same system. Uh, city engineering, uh, has a lot to do with the capital improvement plans for utilities. Design has a lot to do with transportation, uh, engineering and, uh, review. Obviously, community development review. Um, and then those construction of those projects, when the city is doing those upgrades to utilities and public works areas, uh, we need the engineering team to have some oversight over that. So it makes sense.
The restructure makes sense. I, I get it. And from our, our meeting yesterday, I think it, it's something that other municipalities are doing as well, or have already done. I guess we're kind of late to the game on this one, but.
But correct. It, it's, it's not uncommon for public works directors to also be the city engineer. So that's a very common thing. And then utilities departments typically have the whole purview of the utility system.
Right. No, I understand. No, it, it absolutely makes sense. Do we have a transportation coordinator currently on staff?
So we have, actually, we have a second senior engineer starting on July 7th, so it's Monday. And we also have a transportation coordinator starting on July 7th, this Monday.
Monday as well.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Radley or either? Anybody from public, we should speak.
Rod Olson, thirty-one, fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. Uh, congratulations for these, uh, two individuals of the new responsibilities. Uh, I do have some great concerns based again on my record request. When I had a record request and your prior, um, facilities manager indicated that 30%, 30% of the city assets are past their normal lifespan. I also requested in my, in my request to the city in March, details with regard to the aspect of preventive maintenance, to which I got nothing. Uh, I, my hopes are on these new positions that we make sure that we have a preventive maintenance, maintenance plan in place as well as a metered plan for all the equipment that's past its normal lifespan. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Probably need to do two different motions. Yeah. So like to have a motion to confirm Vladimir Simonovsky as the new Public Works Department Director. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, uh, motion to confirm Glenn Brooks as the new Utilities Operations Department Director. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second, second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, guys. All right. Next up, Phase 2B Platte Crossroads at Kelly Park.
Good afternoon. For the record, Bobby Howell, planning managers, is a platte for Phase 2B Crossroads at Kelly Park. It is located within the Crossroads at Kelly Park Development. This platte serves to establish portions of Scrub Hickory Avenue, Zephyr Lily Avenue, and Marshell Door Street rights of way to support the expansion of and connectivity within the Crossroads at Kelly Park Development. This platte is consistent with Florida statute 177, the major development plan which was approved and the construction site plan was approved. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The motion this afternoon is approval. Uh, Attorney Hand is here and he would like to brief the commission about changes to the planning statute. Basically, in a nutshell, plating will be administratively approved from here on out based on the bill that's signed by the governor, so.
Andrew? Thank you, Mr. Howell. Uh, the city council, I just wanted to provide a bit of an update. I know that Cliff will be coming forward, uh, to you with a number of, uh, new bills and so forth that have been approved by the governor just within the past week. What, uh, what, what Bobby's referring to is, is one of those, it's this Senate Bill 784, which became a law, um, yesterday. It was approved by the governor on the 20th and it provides or requires, uh, cities and local governments to, uh, essentially go or, or offer an administrative process for platte approval. Given that this was already on the agenda, it made sense just to have it come before you. And because of the, the date and the timeframe that this was approved on the 20th, became a law yesterday, obviously, all local governments are situated in the state of Florida where, uh, most are still reacting to some of the bills that came through last year. Uh, this is something that, uh, obviously cities couldn't get ahead of. And accordingly, in the motion, what, uh, I recommended to Mr. Howell, what I recommend to you is that you include a, uh, as, as part of the motion, um, a directive to, uh, your city administrator to be able to, to sign these plats until such time, or at least for this one in particular, until such time as we can bring forward a resolution and ultimately, um, some ordinances that are revising the platte process to conform to some of the requirements and updated permitting requirements in the state of Florida.
Any questions for Andrew?
So, and thank you for that. I appreciate the kind of update on that. But, but basically with that law being in place as of yesterday, and I'm not saying by any means that this is it, but if we were to deny this, I guess, should we even be voting on this at all now that it's not technically within our purview to approve it or deny it? I guess, should we even be voting on this at all now that it's not technically within our purview to approve it or deny it?
Ultimately, uh, it's before, I mean, it, it's already on the agenda, it did not make sense to pull it off. To answer your question in particular, uh, if you have any questions or if there's anything that you wanted to discuss regarding it, can, as far as a matter of what you're actually voting on, really, like I said, the directive would be for the city administrator to administratively approve the plat so long as it conforms to one seventy-seven, which, which staff has testified that it does.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's not opening us up in any capacity that, well, you guys voted on that, even though it shouldn't have come before you to begin with, only because of that new law then. I just want to make sure.
Right, what we'll be seeing is I changed the plat to essentially place city administrator's name on the plat for that approval, and ultimately, uh, the city administrator would be executing it. In the meantime, what I'm anticipating, I'll be discussing this, Cliff, is probably the most, most likely the next meeting, you'd be having a resolution coming before you so that any other plat is going to go through the same process until such time as all of the ordinance updates are done to reflect.
So they'll still come to us, but it'd be, we approve the administrator effectively, Bobby or whoever to.
Providing the authority to the administrator, either to the city administrator or to Bobby or some other senior staff member to ultimately administratively approve the plat, is correct.
But isn't the, the, I guess, the, the spirit of this bill is to create efficiencies and to kind of streamline the process? By putting it on agendas or having to wait for approval from council, doesn't that, is it's kind of productive to what that bill is stating?
Well, right now, the city is in a situation where no one is authorized to sign plaques because the city code specifically requires and statutes as until yesterday, as of until yesterday, required governing body to approve and execute the plat.
Sure.
So, uh, ultimately, right now, there's a state of limbo. What Mr. Howell and I discussed is keeping it on the agenda, just so you can see this, so I can provide the update and ultimately providing the authority for the city administrator for this one to execute the plat. The resolution that would be coming before you in the future, or, you know, ultimately whatever Cliff settles on and discusses with you would be not just, not for this plat, but for plaques that are forthcoming, just to get it into the administrative purview.
Sure.
Until the ordinances can be corrected.
Okay, okay, understood, thank you. No, just with all these changes, I like to get as many questions out as possible, just so that we don't get in any gray areas there, so I appreciate the, the info there, thank you.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Any other questions?
So, the only thing I, I, I remember asking a couple of questions and, and I do understand this, that was into, written into the laws of yesterday. But now that it just goes to the, either the city administrator or the community development director, is there some way where a plat is approved just for informational purposes that the commission at least be notified that, you know, through an email that, you know, this plat came through and we approved it? Because I understand that any development has to go through DRC, planning and zoning, and it comes through us as an ordinance. But then the plaques usually come afterwards, at some point afterwards. But sometimes what we're left with is, yeah, we had approved the ordinance first and second reading, and usually by the time the plat comes to us, we realize that, you know, now it's, it's an actual development and it's going to be turning dirt. So is there some way to kind of just, I guess, with the resolution at some point, just kind of notify the commission, you know, this plat was approved?
Absolutely, that's something the city can work through with an internal process to provide that notification. And in the meantime, there are other provisions to statute in certain circumstances that require a preliminary plat. So what you will be seeing, uh, ultimately is an update to the entire plating ordinance that provides a, a new process that I think will still keep the city in the loop. The last step would be some sort of internal mechanism, so you get that notification that, hey, the plat's done, it's going to be recorded, it's finished out. But that would, you know, not be part of a, obviously the approval process, some sort of notation. However, council, commission would, you know, prefer to receive that, can certainly be worked out with, with your staff.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Very welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Aubrey McKimmy, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. For some time now, I've always been concerned about consistency in how we do things. I suspect that this will increase consistency. But what I would really like to understand a little bit more is will it affect time scales any? Because I don't hear anything that tells me whether this is going to speed things up or slow things down.
Anybody else? Not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for Phase Two B of the crossroads at Kelly Park. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
I thought it was to, was that an recommendation?
It's, it's not within the agenda, but what I would also ask is that the council provide that or provide some direction to allow the city administrator to execute the plat.
You want to put that in within this motion?
Within the motion, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve the plat for Phase Two B of the crossroads at Kelly Park and look for a resolution within the next two council meetings to.
Just direction to authorize the city administrator to execute this particular plat.
Okay, so direction for the city administrator to execute this plat.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Anderson?
I had a ready motion.
Okay, second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Invitation Cove, Amir.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Amir Hamza, I'm a planner. The applicant has submitted a major development, development plan for property located at seven thirty Monroe Avenue, just east of South Christiana Street and west of Sheiler Avenue. This major development plan consists, the major development plan is called Invitation Cove, which is a proposed subdivision that consists of a total of forty-three town home units. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the seven thirty Monroe Avenue site. The total site area is five point six seven acres and the site is currently big and as shown on the aerial map. The feature land use of this property is mixed use and the zoning for this property is MU dash D, a mixed use downtown zoning district. This is the Invitation Cove major development plan. Previously, another major development plan was approved on this site under the name of Oaks at Monroe, which consisted of a, a total of eighty-six apartment units, but that plan just never came to fruition. So this is the replacement plan. The development review committee has recommended approval at the June, June ten twenty twenty-five meeting. The planning commission unanimously recommended, unanimously recommended approval of the Invitation Cove major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the Invitation Cove major development plan.
Okay, any questions for Amir?
Just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
On this one, is this going to be gated? That you know of?
No, it's a, to my knowledge, no.
Okay, and then will there be any alleyways within this community?
Yes, because the townhome, they're townhomes, so because the townhomes are below fifty feet of frontage, it, it will have to be required to have an alleyway because they're rear loaded townhomes, yes.
And so that, just to understand, so the HOA that is established will take care of those alleyways and then it'll be city streets otherwise?
Yes.
Inside blocks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Yeah.
And where, where's the entrance to this development?
It's from Monroe Avenue, which is to the north, was to my cursor right here, Monroe Avenue. It's just north of the Semarong Boulevard, where four forty-one intersects with Semarong. Just north of that, so Monroe is the, Monroe is the, right here, Monroe Avenue.
All right, now, on, on the drawing.
Yes.
It, it shows that, uh, is that Christiana?
No, Christiana's to the west, this is Monroe Avenue, it's between Christiana and Sheiler.
Correct, okay, but, but where Monroe and Christiana intersect? That is not exactly.
No, it, it's not the exact, it's to the west, they intersect to the west of the site.
No, but I'm talking about the street itself, that, that's not a straight street. There, there's, it's jagged, but it doesn't show that on this map. So they're planning on taking that hump out of the road there where Christiana and Monroe meets?
The Chris, let me go back to the map if I can show you. Christiana Street is right, yeah, around here, I think, yeah. Yeah, Christiana is right here, and it's between Sheiler and Christian, it doesn't even, Christiana doesn't even meet the site.
No, what I'm saying, Monroe.
Yes.
Is not exactly as straight as it shows on this map, is that correct?
Monroe is a straight, this map is, it's just showing like the, the, they're, they're proposing a left turn lane onto the site and a right turn lane as well. That's why it doesn't, shows that it's not straight, but it's actually a straight road.
Okay, so they're going to put in both, the left and the right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the applicant here, there's quite a few questions? Yeah, if you want to just come forward and just, just confirm what, what Amir's been.
Good afternoon, for the record, Kim Fisher, Psych Corp Engineering, sixteen fourteen White Dove Drive, Winter Springs, on behalf of the owner. Thank you, Amir, Amir has been really, really wonderful to work with, but yeah, I can answer any questions you have.
I'm good, once you say there's going to be a right and a left, I'm okay.
My, my one question is, I know, you know, it's the back of Winn-Dixie, it's, it's one property over from Winn-Dixie. One of the things I, I wanted, hopefully, we've got the ability to get a four-way stop there at, at where Christiana dead ends into Monroe. I know it's, it's not, it's not your problem, but, but, because there's one piece of property that really dead into that. But if, if we can make sure that we've got the ability, at some point, it'd be nice to have the, the Winn-Dixie people could, could get to a four-way stop and your property and then the one between the Winn-Dixie and your property. So we've got a nice four-way stop that we could put there, I think that would be a, a, a big improvement.
Correct, so what we've done since we don't have any frontage that aligns with Christiana, we've provided, which is track B, which is right below our pond, we've provided cross access, which will go to the property in between us and Winn-Dixie, so that then that can be set up in the future.
Okay, that, that was my, yeah, to me, that's, then that makes a whole, whole area, you know, work really, really well.
Good point.
Because they talk about speeding on both Christiana and on Monroe, that way we can eliminate two problems. Okay, that, that, that was my, my concern. All right, any, any other questions? If not, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the major development plan for Innovation Cove.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second, got a second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, is there anybody here that wants to speak on the interlocal agreement? Just even though we've, we're going to continue to date certain of August sixth, anybody needs to speak on that? We'll have it back on August sixth, but if you want to.
Aubrey McKimmy, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. As I've previously stated, what we're looking to do is provide, is to separate Golden Gem into three, into two sections. When in fact, when we do that, it's actually going to become three sections. One of the sections is going to be administered by Orange County, but it's actually the entrance to Golden Gem area for the retention pond. We're going to have an area probably about two thousand meters long that is not going to have anything done in terms of sub base. And it affects both the city and it affects myself. Because you guys voted for me to be into the KPI. However, my part of the road is going to be left untouched. So what I'm suggesting is, when we do vote on this, at least be aware that there's inconsistencies in Golden Gem Road. It's been created by the city and at some point or other, it will need to be remedied by the city.
Anybody else? Okay, well, just look, I think we've already continued this.
I just had a question, just to confirm again with, with staff on this one, you guys are meeting next week with Orange County, correct?
Correct, we're meeting with Orange County staff next week.
Okay, and, and Mr. McKimmy brings up a, 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 a point that we discussed yesterday as well. There is a phase of that road that is kind of in limbo, then, I guess, what's the goals with that? Or are we, will that meeting be kind of the tell of what the future of that looks like?
Right, so what staff hopes to get out of this is to have another discussion with the Orange County staff to see what path forward we can take. There's a couple of options that the city sees as possibilities to move forward, see what the county's appetite is on that from a staff level, and then come back at the sixth to lay those out to council for further direction.
Okay, is there any deadlines to take this road in any capacity or disagreement having to be done by next date?
No.
Okay, so we have a little time, we have plenty of time to, to do this.
Correct, okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank county for coming, at least, appreciate y'all coming out today. All right, looking for to designate an official voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. Anybody want to take that role on?
I know you went down the list of, I believe you did it in twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Anderson did twenty twenty.
Yeah, I had Mr. Williams send us a list, or, so Commissioner Anderson last year, myself the year before, Commissioner Velasquez the year before that, and Commissioner Smith in twenty-one.
It was up.
We do the rotating.
Yeah.
So what does that mean?
I'm just reading what it says. I'm just saying, I'm just reading what the list says.
Mayor, I'll do it.
All right, there we go, look for motion to approve. Mr. Smith is our voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities. So we got a motion, man, everybody, Anderson and Nesta, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right.
We just want to be fair.
All right, good, good, all right, Bradley.
Good afternoon again. Business item number seven, I'm back for you with the City of Popka nonprofit grant program for adoption. Just to recap, at the May twenty-first council meeting, council provided direction to staff to develop a nonprofit grant program to support local nonprofit organizations. Staff developed that proposed program framework and presented it at the last council meeting on June eighteenth. Some additional information and direction was provided by council. Staff has made those adjustments and also I know we've had some other discussions at the agenda prep meetings, so I did have a list here of some items to additionally clean up or see if the, the council would like to clean up. One of the items was the federal, federally tax exempt organizations. Right now, the program, or as the program was first presented, indicated a C-three organization only. There was discussion at last meeting about whether or not to do a C-four. Different social groups, like the women's club, a pop women's club, Rotary Chamber, they have different designations. So looking for the pleasure of the council on that. In the update, I did write it as federally tax exempt organizations. The application windows on the packet that was provided reflected the, the application window for this fiscal year, which we're trying to get in before the fiscal year ends. But moving forward, I do need to add the primary application window of October first through October thirtieth and the secondary application window pending availability of budgeted funds, April first through April thirtieth. That's halfway through the fiscal year. If that's the pleasure of the council, we can do that. Also, better define the award term, award term will be twelve months from date of the grant award. Applicants may only have one grant active at a time. And then also, the second bullet on project criteria on the pamphlet, just a small little update, replacing the and with an and or, just to make sure it's clear that you don't need all of those items in the list to meet the qualifications. That, that bullet says project must offer program for youth, at risk individuals and senior citizens. So just a small edit to make it and or.
In addition to that, I'm looking at the, for this proposal content, the criteria, it says proof of nonprofit status five oh one C-three. So I guess if we're not going to.
We would take that out.
Yeah, so just noted, okay.
Correct. And I did want to go ahead and show real quick. Staff have developed an online portal or application form for this program that would, that highlights the program itself, eligibility, project criteria, then provides space for them to digitally submit their application, all the contact information and project information scope, their attachments. They would submit that, won't let me. They would submit that, won't let me right now, submit it. And uh for this initial run, uh. These applications will run through the city administrator's office, uh just to make sure we get these out. Uh, and, and running as it's a first-time program, and then we'll determine where that lives with the staff moving forward. So really just any other questions or if those last changes are acceptable. I can include those into the, into the program, or if there's any additional changes requested.
Any questions for Bradley?
Uh, yes, I, I did receive uh a couple of questions. Uh, one is in reference to the scoring criteria. What score is required in order to receive the grant?
So we did not put a minimum score. And if I, just let me just double check, make sure we did not, we did not require a minimum score. That is something we can add in if the council would like. Sometimes a grant program will require at least a fifty-point score to qualify. Sometimes it'll require seventy, it just depends on the, the program. So if that's a, a, a want from the council, we can certainly set that and establish that as a guideline.
Well, if it's not a do or die. What the score is, it, it doesn't matter, but then if it is, then we need to establish what the score is going to be.
So theoretically, uh, uh, the funding could be at a state, depending on the number of applications that are received. That you rank the, where you rank the applicants. And then they get put top to bottom, you might not have enough funding to get to the bottom. So you, you definitely want the highest score. But we could put a threshold if you want additional qualification, we could put a threshold there.
Alright, so that brings up the second question. That if you're going to rank them depending on the score and looking at the chart. If I've only been in service one to four years, I can only receive ten points. That means I lost fifteen points automatically. And then where it says grant match. Uh, I'm, wasn't sure what. It meant by thirty points for a hundred percent, fifteen points for fifty percent, because I thought it was a hundred percent match.
So the scoring was set up and I, I have to look back and see what. What we discussed here in this.
Because at that point, that means they could lose another fifteen points, and so they're already down to seventy already. Providing they get all the points in other two categories.
Right.
So that's their concern.
Yeah, and that's typically grant programs have this type of structure to where you uh can do that. I guess that does bring up a question though, again, I do recall that we just, did discuss that was a hundred percent match, so if that's the case. Uh, that gr- uh criteria needs to change.
Okay.
So I guess the question I'll put back to council for direction is, do you want to. Completely disqualify somebody from the ranking if they don't have. The hundred percent match, or do you wanna have a minimum fifty percent match?
That was the goal, right? So that when you have your, your newer businesses that don't have the capital.
Right.
It'll give them their chance because we require a hundred percent match, then your companies and organizations been in business for less than, you know, three or four years. Then they won't be able to participate. So I think if we keep it, with the fifty percent, it does allow more people to be able to. I thought that was the, what kind of we discussed last time.
So, so the minimum would be if the, if, what I'm hearing is. And the way this criteria is laid out, a minimum fifty percent match is required, that will get you fifteen points. If you do a full match, that will get you the full thirty. Or we go back to a hundred percent match and we remove that criteria and we re- we re-score the points. You could increase the points for benefit to City of Apopka.
So, so then we're going to change it where you don't have, where it's not a dollar-for-dollar match, is what you're saying. That they could also qualify if they had a fifty percent.
A fifty-fifty match, or a fifty percent match, yeah. If we keep, if, if the minimum is fifty percent match, this criteria makes sense. If it doesn't, it does not make sense.
Right.
Yeah, that's the point.
I had similar questions of uh, some. Residents that, that have nonprofits had, had a different understanding that there wasn't gonna be a match component to this, but maybe we can. It, I mean, still, I guess, if people are gonna match it for a bigger program, whatever they may doing, maybe doing, maybe you do. Ten percent to a hundred percent, three points for every ten percent basically. So if you're willing to match twenty percent, it's six points. Ten percent, three points, whatever, up to a hundred percent of being thirty points, just to give that scale. I mean. Just so it doesn't disqualify anybody from applying. I want people to be able to apply, that's the whole point. And I don't want, the whole point is to be able to grow those programs, similar to Commissioner Anderson's point. That um, those that are starting out are those that, that may need this, just to not disqualify them off the bat.
And I do, to tag into that. I do remember, I do know at the last council meeting, the discussion about having a ma- match was to make sure there was some commitment on. The nonprofit side that they're, have a program up and running, it's, it's supplementing that program, it's boosting that program. You could, you know, I don't know if I'd go, because again, this, you wanna try and make the scoring as easily as possible. I don't know if I'd go. Maybe a next run down would be twenty-five percent, but I don't know if I'd do a three-point. Yeah, I don't know if I'd go that.
We need some skin in the game, or, or, you know, the, some type of commitment from the applicant, so.
I, I mean, I'm satisfied with fifty percent. My only concern is if you're going to grade them or rank them according to their score. Then those individuals may not even get into the, the run. Because they've already lost points from the, from the start.
Well, they would be in the running because we don't have a minimum point score to qualify. So we don't, we aren't requiring a minimum point score. To qualify to go to the selection committee. And really, so, so, you know, that's.
Okay, so then we're not gonna rank them according to the score then?
They are gonna be ranked according to the score, yeah.
But they get ranked according to the score, but they're not gonna be.
But if they don't meet a certain score, they would not, some brands are set up where if you don't meet a certain score, you're automatically taken off of the list for award.
Let, let me tell you how the one we, that we won, the thirteen million dollar one that Riley put together for our team, is that. We were number one ranked and they went down, they went all the way down to a certain number and then they ran, they, they. They then had, like, some that were below kind of the, what they were looking for, and they just split the money the last, what, bottom three or four?
Yeah, so the, the, they, that committee recommended to fully award as far down the list they could. And then the remaining applicants that were on the list, they didn't even split to, to award those something. But they also had a minimum, if, if your selection, if their selection committee did not score you at least, I think it was sixty percent. You could not be eligible to be awarded. And there were a couple that were close on that.
So.
So, but this program that's proposed does not have a base.
Alright.
Does not have a minimum.
So the committee would have the, the, the liberty to say, okay, these bottom ones, we, so we're gonna split the balance.
They're gonna, they're gonna have the ability to provide a recommended, a recommend, a recommended award to council.
Okay.
And then council has a decision at the end to decide, to agree with that recommendation, make an adjustment.
So is that, is, the one thing I, I don't quite understand, they'll be ranked. Um, but the different organizations are applying for a certain amount of the fund. So how does that work? If, so if someone scores a hundred and they put in. And I, I believe what was the maximum that they can put in for?
I think we had five thousand.
So that, that organization would qualify for five thousand, but someone who ranks less than that. What would be the maximum that they can apply for? Even if they asked for five thousand, but they scored seventy.
So the way the process, we'll all just kinda run through the process from the start. There's been a hundred thousand dollars uh budgeted for this um, for this program. We'd open the application window, the nonprofit uh, um, organizations would apply during that window. The window would close, staff would complete a technical review of those base minimum requirements. So all the documents that they need to turn in, that they've turned it into, turned into proposal, they've completed the form. Those that qualify will then be given to the selection committee members, which will be five members coming up on the next uh agenda item.
They're showing the brown field.
I'm sorry, I hit too many buttons. Those members wa- will score each application based off of the scoring criteria. Or selection criteria. They'll each determine their own scores, we'll have a meeting, we will get the scores from all the committee members. Put them, you know, average them, rank them out, and then it's up to the committee to provide a recommendation to council. They could recommend, here's the requests, here's, we have funding to hit all the requests, they all met the qualifications and they all scored. Where I said we don't have a minimum scoring floor. They could score twenty-five theoretically, and if. The selection committee feels appropriate that they be uh recommended for award. They would put that together and we'd bring that to council for council review and final award.
Alright, and so, well, then we need to make two other corrections under project criteria. Where applicants must ensure dollar-for-dollar match.
Yeah, we need to update that. A minimum fifty percent.
And then underneath where it says grant match, the total match less equal of, like, see. That might be awarded, so again, we must, we need to put in fifty percent there as well. Other than that, looks good.
Anybody else? Alright, I guess.
I just have one, on the financial oversight section of this, it says the city reserves the right to request a financial audit. To ensure proper use of grant funds, which will be conducted according to the terms specified in the award agreement. I guess what would we be looking for in that, or what would be requested to be provided by the awardee?
As far as like an au- like if we were to do an audit?
Yes.
That would be if there was concern brought forth about the use of the funds. The city has the right to then go to that nonprofit and conduct an audit in the area we see fit. And that would be spelled out in the app, in the agreement they sign.
Okay.
It's, it's just a protection layer.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
I brought some of this up the last time. Um, we discussed this, is uh remember that the auditing could cost. The person, um, the CPA will charge anywhere from one to five thousand dollars for an audit. So if they put up five thousand and you gave them five thousand, uh they might say, why even bother? Um, if you turn around and audit them, um, maybe it should be a self-auditing or the city. Put up the CPA for the audit, um, if you're gonna audit it. And then, again, I want to reiterate the, um, looking at. Vetting very, very heavily. Just because I found at the state, one organization here in town. Still had up their five oh one C-three listed at the state level at sunbiz.org. But when you go and look up their five oh one C-three at the federal level, at the IRS. Um, they applied for the five oh one C-three. Got the five oh one C-three, applied at the state to be a nonprofit at the state, applied for their bank account. But they never once filed a report, a nine ninety with the federal government, not one time. And so, um. They're not a five oh one C-three. They just filed the form. And so they were revoked due to never performing. Um, and yet it still says at sunbiz.org that five oh one C-three number. And that they're a, an nonprofit five oh one C-three at the state level. And so they're probably listed at the county as a five oh one C-three. Um, and then we ha- again have organizations that we're dealing with at the city that have not. Bothered to do their taxes and things like this. And then they're really late filing their state. Reports and things, so it's a matter of following through. And I do have some concerns about some of the processes. And how many hoops you have to put a small organization through to get. And then to follow up on the grant for just five thousand dollars and them having to match it. Um, if this were a hundred thousand dollar grant or a million dollar grant, then all those processes are worthy of it. But when you have a small volunteer group of, you know, twenty-five people. And they're having to do all the hoops, then it's worth it. But the vetting end is the most important thing.
Anybody else?
Okay, um, I guess I'm ignorant to this, this whole discussion, but I wanted to make sure I understood the process. Um, and really understand what's the objective of this, this grant? Is it more so for social programs, is it just any particular nonprofit as a whole coming to plot? Or is it specific areas that City of Apopka's council is trying to target to use these funds?
I'll read you the, the purpose, um. It's provides financial assistance to schools and nonprofit organizations committed to supporting youth and senior-focused initiatives.
So just youth and seniors and, okay, alright. Reason why I asked this question because I know, um, there has been in the past efforts to do beautification projects and things of that nature. From different organizations. Um, someone may not be a nonprofit. It may be a volunteer organization. I just didn't know if this would allow it for them to get funding for something that they may want to do. So for example, you had the, the group of businesses that did the paintings along their walls and they came and asked for materials and things of that nature. So I just didn't know if someone like that would be able to access funding for something that's really gonna benefit the community as a whole. So I just didn't know if that was even an option, or is it just specifically for nonprofits, so, just, just a thought, thanks.
And mayor, just real quick clarification also, uh we also at-risk individuals, with a program for at-risk individuals.
Sylvester Hart, I won't be long and I won't, um, um, the issues that Dr. O brought up. Those are some of my concerns also, so I won't repeat that. But, um, when it comes, when it come down to making the selection criteria, who was involved in making the criteria?
We are the council.
We were.
Who?
The council.
Council.
Okay. When you look on the agenda, City of Apopka nonprofit grant program adoption, don't say anything about matching. I'm just, you know, don't say anything about matching. So when we look at, when we're saying we're trying to help people and help organizations. And like I said, I don't repeat everything Dr. O said, but if you've got a small organization. And you're talking about five, five grand and you gotta match that, I mean, the reason you're applying for the grant, in the first place, you need assistance. So when we make it difficult or challenging for these people, it's like we put a carrot out there for you, say, hey, look, this is what we're doing for you. But we make it very challenging for you to get it. So in, in some ways, it's just misleading, but it looks good to the public. And then when you say, well, like when we had the CRA money. How many residents over eight ye- over six, seven years participated? We have it there, we put it out there, say we got it, but the criteria forget it, nobody really knows, nobody take advantage of it, so what. What benefit does it does to the, to the city and our citizens? We, we, uh, we have to do better when it comes to that. And some of these criteria selections, here again, uh, we, we need to streamline that. And we need to look at what are we really, uh, uh, Rogers brought, what, what is, you know, we put it on paper like, yeah, we wanna help, but. When you put this criteria here, okay, h- how are we helping? How are we helping to, to, and, and when you say, um. Boots on the ground, these are some of the organization, organizations that are boots on the ground that's really making a difference in our community. When we say small business, they're the ones that push and thrive the city. Well, it's the same thing with these small organizations that are doing things that are helping keep, keeping our communities safe. And they need help doing that. And we make it hard and difficult for them to get to, you know, some of the resources that they need to do to. And most of you guys who are in nonprofit, you know, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work when you're just doing volunteer things. And if you take all that out of the community, we really would have a rough time, thank you.
Albert, give me three, six, and three golden gem road, just a quick thought, a hundred K isn't a lot of money. And in the long term, we intend to grow these grants. My concern is that when we set a precedent today, we need to look at what it might mean tomorrow. And I would like to think that when the city does provide grants for people, that we provide it in such a manner. With terms and conditions that keep the money within the city. There would be no point in giving a young organization a grant. If that grant was for travel and all the money went out of the city somewhere else, where does it benefit the, the average person in the city then? So I would like to see more bricks and mortar or, or, or things that are strategically gonna place those nonprofits. Within the city rather than allow the, the funding that we. Get to go out the city, not because I believe that it's important just now, but I believe that we must bear these things in mind for future. The city comes first.
Anybody else? No, close of public hearing, look for a motion to approve the amended. Uh, nonprofit grant program for adoption. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
What did we amend?
The amended.
Yeah, I can review that for you. Update to read federally tax exempt organizations as opposed to the designations of C three, C four, et cetera. Add the standard application window of primary application window, October first through October thirtieth. Secondary application window, pending availability of budgeted funds, April first through, uh, April thirtieth. Define the award term being twelve months from the date of the grant award, applicants may only have one grant active at a time. Make that small edit to the second bullet on project criteria, replacing and with and or. And then making the adjustments to page. On grant requirements, project criteria, final bullet. Applicants must ensure a minimum fifty percent match of the grant request using a combination of cash and or in-kind goods or services. And then grant match bullet number one, just below that, total match must equal or exceed. A minimum fifty percent of the amount being requested from the City of Apopka.
Are you able to, once it's updated, just recirculate that, that to everybody, please?
Yes, we'll, we'll get this updated and sent back out to all commissioners and then, uh. Get it out.
Yeah, absolutely, and I just had a question on the, the financial audit itself, I guess, what are the expectations of that, should we go down that route for your, for a group?
Again, I think this would be, this is a clause that would be in the agreement. In case there's concern that city funds are not being used as requested in the grant application.
Do we have this, uh, award agreement already created that?
We're still, we're still working that one through with the city attorney's office.
Can we bring that back for our approval as well, so we can review it?
Sure, we can do that while the, um, while the windows open.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Just so we understand what the agreement is between us effectively and.
Right, and it, it's pretty standard in these type of agreements to have an auditing. Option for the city, because again, you're using city funds and awarding that to a, a recipient. The city needs to retain a right to then, if there's a concern, go have that audited to make sure those funds are being utilized as prescribed.
Okay.
Is, is there anything in here regarding the discretionary funds? I think we spoke on that.
Yeah, I believe we.
And do we wanna wait for Commissioner Smith to get back, just so he gets the same answers too, I don't want him to miss the answers. Yeah, he just stepped out, I just wanna make sure he's getting those same answers as well. Thank you.
Susan. There's a gentleman here, I want to speak. But is it, is it under the gentleman? The gentleman?
What was it about?
It was on the same. No?
I was at one of them. He should do that green card then.
Why don't we just take a five minute, let's just do it now or do it later?
You can do it now.
Yeah. Alright. So we've got a question.
Yeah, the question from Commissioner. The, the question from Commissioner Velasquez was about the discretionary funds and under the grant, grant requirements, grant match. Uh, we did identify in cash or in kind or cash donation, donations from the City of Apopka discretionary funds cannot be counted as matched for this program.
Okay, so looking for a motion to adopt. The City of Apopka nonprofit grant program as amended, got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Alright, next up, nonprofit grant selection committee appointees.
Uh, we did receive the appointees from the mayor and each commissioner, uh, those are up on the screen there. The commitment, time commitment for this, uh, selection committee would be maximum two, uh, grant periods, so. Two, uh, uh, award recommendation meetings. We have Ms. Lorraine Potter, Ms. Mary Bell Brinkel, Ms. Martha McCray, Mr. Sylvester Hall, and Mr. Greg Jackson.
Any questions, anybody from public, which should speak on this, now close of public hearing.
When someone on a commission or a committee has a, um, financial relationship with a situation. They have to abstain. That's the only time in which you can abstain, and then as you know, when you've taken your ethics. Course, just like I just did, for my, um, commission seat, uh, you have to file an eight, a Form eight. And then after the situation is over, you have to file an eight F. So if let's say Mr. Nesta, um, had a real estate deal involved with. Something that came before the commission, he'd have to file an eight and say, I can't vote on this issue, I abstain. And then when the subdivision or whatever was completed, or the city bought the lot and everything was completed, he'd file the eight F. My concern here is that, um, several of the people on here, um, and I love some of them to death. Um, might be in charities that would want some of these funds. And they would need to abstain from any decisions, they would not be able to, um, look at these applicants. Now, not saying they have to do any ethics commission, I don't know whether they'd have to qualify for any ethics commission. Courses, or whether they would have to, um. File any papers, what I'm saying is they ethically, morally would need to abstain from looking at any of those papers. And it's gonna throw your committee off. So, um, I am concerned that, uh, some of the people in our city, like I was, on five and six charities. And, uh, I know some that are on multiple charities, so that's my great concern is that we look at. Um, yes, they have the great experience with charities and how charities run and taking care of the treasury and all. But we don't want them to have to say, okay, um, I've been on the, in that charity, I know how it runs. And I know who the treasurer is and how they handle their funds. Thank you.
Attorney hand, to, do, does an appointed committee have to go through a, like an ethics training or, or sign anything, or is it? Is it separate, are they governed in any capacity by the state?
Yes, committees are still covered by, uh, the typical ethics statutes and so forth by the state.
So would they, would they have to take similar class, like the four hour ethics class like that, we take the same thing?
Yes, by recollection.
Okay, so this all would still apply then, similar to how it does apply to us?
Not exactly as it applies to you, because there are differences in rules for appointed members as opposed to elected members, so there's some variations.
Okay, but they are required to take that, that class.
For this particular, since I don't know the ins and outs of this particular committee, they, I, I believe so. Uh, but I don't wanna give you a firm, uh, to that, but it's my understanding, yes, they're, they're required to, to have that, that education.
And Commissioner.
Hold on, let me, I, I just wanna, go ahead, please.
If you'd like, uh, we are bringing back the grant agreement document, we can also bring back the full details on what would be required for them.
Yeah, that, that's what I was gonna ask, you can just deep dive and get a, 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 an opinion from your office, just to let us know what are the expectations of these committee members?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sylvester Hall, first I wanna thank Commissioner Nesta for appointing me to this position. I'm, I wanna clear up some. I am not Commissioner Nester people. I am the City of Apopka people. When I come here, I represent the City of Apopka, I represent all residents, Mayor, Ms., Mayor Nelson, I am your people also. When you're right, I stand with you, when you're wrong, I stand against you, it's just that simple. I belong to nobody, and I wanna make that perfectly clear from this point out. I stand for righteousness. We all make mistakes. But when we do, we acknowledge them, we correct it and we move on, so don't ever call me Nick's people. Your people, I am your people too, you are my mayor. Thank you. Now I wanna clear up some, when I say who made this criteria, uh, you said we all do, we all did. But it's, it's, it's funny that if you made the criteria, some of the questions that you're asking should have been already. Vetted and done before we got to this stage, and I wanna say this. When we look at small nonprofit and Dr. O brought this up, and we're talking about for five thousand dollars. Doing an audit on them, that could cost them five thousand dollars. Here, we have issues with the city. For hundreds of thousands of dollars and we can't get an audit. Make it make sense. Make it make sense. And so whenever I come to this podium here, I am speaking for the people. It's no personal gain for me, it's about standing up for the ones who can't stand up and speak for themselves, who are afraid to come to this mic. And for the twenty plus years that I served, I put my life on the line for those same people. So when I come here and stand, I'm standing for, for all of them as a veteran and as for a concerned citizen. For this area that I live in, my kids live in, my grandkids live in. And I'd be damned if I don't leave this a better world for them than what I had. And I'd be damned if I don't leave this a better world for them than what I had. If I don't do that, I'm a sorry parent. I'm a sorry grandparent, I'm a sorry great grandparent. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve the appointees for the City of Apopka nonprofit grant program selection committee.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Brownfield Advisory Committee appointees, Radley?
Again, we received all the appointees for the Popka Brownfield Advisory Committee. From the mayor and commissioners. Mr. Bob Elmquist, Mr. Modesto Lopez, Mr. Rogers Beckett, Mr. Leroy Bell, and Dr. Loretta Florin.
Any questions for Radley, anybody from the public wish?
Leroy Bell, again, I'd like to thank Commissioner Nester for the appointment. And I too like to state. I'm a hundred percent disabled veteran. I fought for that flag. I got some blood on that flag. My son and I have the right to walk out if they want to. Mr. Nesta. My language is my language and it has nothing to do with you. Whatever criterias of this brown field. Whatever it directs me to do, that's what I'll follow. We had people to come into this chamber and stand at this platform. David Rankin. Tony Bench. Mr. Cooper. Curse and belittle people and those were your people, mayor. There's no, there's no getting around it, you can't lie about it and say it wasn't, all you got to look at is a computer, the one that contributed to your campaign. And, and I'm gonna leave you with a bit of advice. My son. I want you to understand this and I want you to understand this clear. Keep it out your mouth, if you want to, if you want to control somebody and get somebody up under control. Start with Otis.
Anybody else? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the appointees for the City of Apopka Brownfield Advisory Committee. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion. Okay, four to one. With, it's four to one with Commissioner Anderson in opposition, okay. Next up, joint planning area agreement, JPA. Bobby?
Good afternoon, Bobby Howe, Planning Manager. At the June sixteenth, eighteenth meeting, you received a presentation about the terms of the JPA. Staff is back today as to whether or not the council wishes to terminate the agreement, follow notice of extension or renegotiate. Little bit of background about the joint planning area agreement, it was agreed upon between Orange County and the City of Apopka on October twentieth, two thousand and four. And it was a settlement agreement resolving prior litigation. It was recently amended, most recently twenty nineteen, which expanded the areas up to take in the industrial park. Off of Wesley Road and that area. The expiration is December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five, and the key clause is section ten B one. We must notify the Orange County of non-renewal at least a hundred and eighty days before expiration, which is July fourth. We come to you today to ask whether or not you would like to renegotiate. Staff as well as Orange County staff is here, we believe it would be in the best interest to renegotiate and to, and to a two-year extension to cover some issues such as ISBAs. And some of the other things that were talked about at the last presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them and Mrs. Misty Mills is here from Orange County as well.
Okay, any questions for Bobby? Anybody from public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to provide direction to city staff. As to one of the following options, deliver notice of non-renewal to Orange County or negotiate an extension. So we're looking for.
Well, when we were at the agenda review, my understanding and I want to respect what the community. Development Department would like is a two-year extension.
Okay. So looking for, so we got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance number thirty one oh three.
Ordinance number thirty one oh three. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from county low density residential to city commercial. For property owned by Nicholas D'Angelo's and Stephanie D'Angelo's. Located at four thirty eight North Park Avenue comprising of point zero six six acres. More or less providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not, we'll close the public.
I wanted to speak to, is the applicant here?
The applicant's here, yeah.
Where's the applicant?
Mayor Commissioner, this, I'm Nick D'Angelo's.
Aye. I had approved, the commission had approved the first annexation, which was the piece of property next to the pizza shop. So you wanna, is that property that we're, we're extending at the second meeting, is that the extension of the first?
No, we just, those two lots were annexed then, the pizza shop is separate and the vegetable stand. And the plan is to market it to a developer, the whole thing.
So you, okay, so my concern is the condition of that property right now.
Well, it's gonna be raised. The piece of property that's on it.
Well, I mean, I see cars parked there, chairs parked there. And so my concern is that if, if we agree to this annexation, you're just gonna kind of extend. Is that, that particular house that's sitting on this annexation going to be demolished?
That's gonna be demolished, yeah. Either by me or the developer.
I'm sorry.
The house is gonna get raised by the developer, I'm sure.
Do you have a developer?
Not yet, we're marketing it to get one.
Sounds like he's trying to sell everything, find a developer to tell us.
Yeah, I know, but it, I mean, the whole property.
Well, that's the idea is to clean up the whole property.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's an eyesore.
Right, exactly.
On the main road there.
Absolutely.
I passed it several times during the week.
Absolutely.
I'm wondering what, what are the plans for that property?
The plan is to clean it all up and get it community friendly. That's the plan.
Cause I, I have reservations because the house is very old.
It is.
And.
Well, I closed it down.
Between the house and the pizza shop doesn't look good at all.
That wasn't supposed to happen. I have some medical issues I'm dealing with with my wife, so things got arrayed. He was supposed to use maybe eight feet there just to back up, because there's no backing into the street. And it turned into what it is now, but I haven't had a chance to get it, get on that. But I understand your concern and we are gonna clean it up. That's the reason why I'm doing it.
I just, you know, I, I understand we want to kind of develop that, that particular property, which I like to see.
Well, I think it's gonna be all knocked down, man. It'll all be knocked down if we get the right developer in there.
Is there a timeframe for that, I mean?
Whenever it takes.
But in the meantime, the property in between.
Well, we're gonna clean it up in the meantime.
So that it, it looks present.
Yeah.
Even for a developer.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number thirty one oh three.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, before we go to the next one, I need, I apologize, I need to bring, we had a gentleman that was here early and somehow we didn't get his, his. Form in, so I just want to give you an opportunity for under public record, so I apologize.
Thank you, mayor, for that. Good afternoon and hello, my name is Lincoln Haynes, ten thirty East San Piper Street. I came in to address a zoning issue, which is currently preventing me from building the ADU to care for my elderly parents. Our lot was annexed into the city municipal limits back in twenty sixteen at the request of its previous owners. Under ordinance two five one four. Section three of that ordinance indicated that the city council would designate the land use classification and zoning. In order to comply with state law. However, the city assigned a temporary designation called transitional. Which inadvertently downzoned us from the A one zoning that the previous owners held with the, um, Orange County. And that unfortunately took away many of our. Previously held entitlements that allowed us to have additional uses for the land. What I'm asking is that I could appreciate that the staff will administratively fix our designation. To very low suburban and residential country estate. We hope that this, and I say, we don't talk about my family. Hope that this area is fixed before you transmit to the state, once again, thank you for your time.
Yeah, and well Bobby Howe's behind you, so did you get his card?
I just spoke to him.
Okay, all right, so we got to take care of, so yeah.
Yes, thanks very much.
And I apologize for.
Oh no, that's okay.
You got it, okay.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, next up, ordinance number thirty one oh four.
Ordinance number thirty one oh four. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional to C C, community commercial. For certain, for property located at four thirty eight North Park Avenue. Owned by Nicholas D'Angelo's and Stephanie D'Angelo's. Comprising point six six acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
No changes.
No changes, all right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number thirty one oh four.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty one oh seven.
Ordinance number thirty one oh seven. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four. The here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida. Owned by P M S one R E O L L C. H M F L L C. Charles P Stallings and Kim L Stallings, Yule E Stallings Junior. And Crystal Denise Stallings. Located on north, the northwest corner of Andich Road and State Road four fifty three, State Road four twenty nine. Comprising of a hundred and ninety six point eight three acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts and an effective date.
No changes, okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Rogers Beckett, Southwest Main Street, is it possible to show a map of what you actually annexing? Because I know, I, I don't, I didn't have an opportunity to look at what may have been in the package, but we're just looking at ordinance number, but we don't know exactly what, what you're voting.
Yes.
So that's the property in black. And the city council approved it first, I believe, at a vote of four and one, the last meeting.
Okay. So it's, I just, I guess, looking at this map, did the city already have like utility services on Undich Road? Sewer, water? Is that available to the site immediately or is that something that developers gonna have to run out there to that location? Cause I'm just, I'm just looking at this like this, this is classic urban sprawl, if I'm just looking at this correctly, but just as a question, so.
Good afternoon, everyone, Vladimir Simonovsky, City Engineer. The proposed, currently there are no utilities there for water, sewer and reclaim. Andich South, that development, which is just on the south of this property. Will be extending the utilities along Effie Drive and also west along Andich till the, approximately. To the entrance of the new property there, which is right across the one swivel there of this property. So, and I believe it's the same development, just the same development.
I'm just trying to figure out, cause I know I did an annexation a long time here, and how is this, where is it contiguous to current city properties? What, I guess, what's the, what's the, the distance, is it a hundred feet, two hundred feet, five hundred feet? What makes it consistent to meet the Florida statute is my question.
We had those same app, questions for the applicant when this project first came to us. Their attorney provided a letter to our legal counsel, our legal counsel reviewed it and determined that it did meet the continuity, continuity requirements of Florida statute. And therefore, that was the basis of the recommendation of approval for the annexation.
That information that a gentleman just stated is that public record. Because if it is, I'd like to get a copy of it. Because this raises a lot of questions when it comes into annexing things in. Is this gonna be, you know, how we justify this? So, I'm gonna leave it at that, but I definitely requesting the documents that where we got it approved. So when somebody else come up and they look to be annexation, they won't go through the same process.
Mayor Commissioner, the, those letters were provided with the packet.
Say that again, they were provided with?
With the package.
In the packet.
Is it in this week's package? I know it was on, it was definitely on, I understand, I saw it last week, but I'm.
If it wasn't in this packet, we'll provide it and we'll email it and put it on the public, but it definitely was provided.
But it's not in this week's packet?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and it was approved by a vote of four one at the last commission meeting.
So, and that's why when you always hear me say that procedures matters. This is what I'm talking about. Life is so easy when we have a procedure that we all go by and that we all abide by. And we don't have double standards. And when you have that SOP, it just makes life so clear for everybody. You know what is expected, you know what not to do, what to do, and it just makes life so easy.
Albany, McKimay, three six oh three Golden Gem Road, as you're probably well aware, annexation has been one of my pet peeves for a long time. However, if you look at where this property is, it's at the end of Effie Road. And Effie Road is gonna have huge amounts of developments all the way along, including a new hospital and all sorts of bits and pieces. So in actual fact, this particular annexation is a benefit to the city. Because we're already gonna, we're already gonna be installing sewers and infrastructure along that piece of road. So the amount of benefits we're gonna get in impact fees from such a large development, this is gonna be immense. And it's not gonna mean that we have to spend a lot of money to get those benefits from the impact fees. The other thing which I was gonna say is just skipped my mind, but you know. We, we have to also realize that by approving this particular development and where it is. It's already close to the KPI. And what we're gonna do when we approve these sorts of developments is prevent urban sprawl. And what really, really we should be looking to do is to keep development, if not immediately in the KPI, but in the close vicinity. Because we're already having the roads and the other infrastructures provided there along Effie, Andich. To, to, to meet the demands of this new. to, to, to meet the demands of this new, uh, subdivision.
Can I reclaim one more minute of my time, please? Um, is there, um, a clicker that I can use to kind of point out an area? Like a red, red dot to kind of see where I have an area of concern? So the top then, okay. Okay, so, for me dealing with this for ten years at the City of Apopka, this looks like the annexation would create an enclave right in this area right here. So this, this is kind of, cause basically when you annex property, it should be consistent, one, and compact. Now, and then you can't create another enclave, so that's pretty much what caught my eye initially looking at this, um, which I know they sent stuff back to me several times, um, but, you know, things have changed, but that's just my area of concern to where you annexing property is gonna create an enclave, which there again goes back to the local agreement, as well as this Florida statute, you can't do that. So, you know, I guess that they have the attorney here to speak on that, to clear this up, but that's just what I've noticed, and that's just from my experience. So this is your vote, thank you.
Apostle, you want to come forward?
Hello, Elisa Sowell, uh, with Hudson Bowlin, three hundred South Ridge Avenue, Orlando, Florida, three two eight zero one. Um, to clarify, am I, oop, let's go back. Could you help me? Yes.
It's the top button here for the.
There we go. Okay, I had an issue with this last time. Okay, so we talked about this last meeting. This parcel, because of the city's GIS map, um, this, only the top portion of this parcel is being proposed to be part of this project and annexed in. So this parcel right here is going to be remaining within the county, so there is no connection. So we are not creating any sort of enclave, all of this is still within the county. And so, we again have, um, provided a memorandum to the city attorney. The city attorney has reviewed and agreed with us. We have also spoken with Orange County, and Orange County does not have an issue with this annexation either. So it complies with all of the statutory requirements.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, all right.
And I just want to state, similar to last time, and I thank you for that explanation, same concerns that I have, and I appreciate, um, Mr. Classic coming to, uh, meet with me at one point to kind of, uh, more deep dive into what this project looks like. It, 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 it'll be a very unique project, and it's my understanding they're supposed to be gated streets. It's, it's gonna have, um, a lot of green space from my understanding, but I still do think that, uh, it will create some, some urban sprawl, yeah, it's gonna be, I think, a little bit more of a draining our, our resources and, and a lot of what, um, our lack of planning for infrastructure, we just need to get our feet out ahead of us, so it's not specific to this project, but just in general, we need to be doing that, so I will be letting you know, but I, I, hopefully you guys understand why.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one oh seven?
So moved.
In a second. Uh, motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Nesta in opposition. Okay, ordinance number thirty-one oh one.
Ordinance number thirty-one oh one. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, rewriting the comprehensive plan in its entirety with the exception of the transportation element, providing for legislative findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Good afternoon, uh, this is the rewrite of the comp plan with the exception of the transportation element. Joint workshops between the city council and planning commission regarding the rewrite of the comprehensive plan were held on September tenth, twenty twenty-four, and on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, where city staff in East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, staff presented the draft of the rewrite of the comprehensive plan and sought input and direction from the planning commission and city council related to this document. Comprehensive plan is the main document provides fa- policy foundation for local planning and land use decisions for a respective jurisdiction in the state of Florida. All jurisdictions within the state are required to have a comprehensive plan per Florida statute. Per statute, Florida, the comprehensive plan is required to have the following elements: future land use, housing, infrastructure, conservation, recreation, and open space, transportation, which was approved by the city council on August seventh, twenty twenty-four, intergovernmental coordination, property rights, which was adopted in twenty twenty-one, and an optional element which is resiliency and sustainability. The current comprehensive plan was adopted in two thousand nine. Uh, several years back, the city contracted with the East Central Florida Regional Camp, Planning Council to rewrite the comprehensive plan with the exception of the transportation element. This rewrite modernizes the comprehensive plan, and a rewrite according to the Florida statute of the comprehensive plan is processed similarly to a large-scale future land use amendment where the amendment is sent to the Florida Department of Commerce and other state agencies for determination of consistency with state planning policies. After their review, it is then scheduled for an adoption hearing before the city council, and is then sent to the Florida Department of Commerce and other state agencies for determination of consistency with state planning policies and final approval. Senate Bill one eighty has been adopted by the Florida Legislature and is now law, and in our briefings, we kind of talked about that, I've sent the commission email outlining Senate Bill one eighty, and at the conclusion of our presentation, Attorney Hand will outline the requirements of Senate Bill one eighty as it relates to the comprehensive plan rewrite. But in a nutshell, the bill prevents burdensome, prohibits burdensome regulations on redevelopment by local governments within a hundred miles of a hurricane storm track and local governments affected by hurricanes Debbie, Helene, and Milton as listed on the federal disaster declaration. The City of Apopka is in an affected area. Based on this, staff reviewed the rewrite, or the draft of the rewrite to determine if there are any policies that need to be removed as they would been determined to be burdensome. We provided a list of those for city council consideration. Um, that was why we had the continuation from the May twenty-first hearing to today to allow us time to review that. A couple highlights from that list include, uh, the reincorporation of H D R twenty-five, the high-density residential area of the city. Uh, we were gonna remove that from the comp plan, we've had to put that back in. And then, uh, upon annexation of properties north of Sebastian Springs Lane, we had reduced that residential density to one unit per acre. We've now had to go back to two, which is what is in the current comp plan, because if not, that would be a burdensome regulation and the city could face some, um, challenges in the, uh, legal landscape on that. Staff recommends if the city council votes to transmit the draft to, today, based on the list that, we recommend that if you transmit, please base it on the list that we provided, is your discretion to not, but we strongly advise you to, based on the requirements of Senate Bill one eighty. On May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission recommended approval of this ordinance by a vote of six to one. The recommended motion this afternoon is to accept first reading of ordinance number thirty-one oh one and authorize staff to transmit to the Florida Department of Commerce and other reviewing agencies. Uh, Attorney Hand will address the requirements of Senate Bill one eighty, and for technical questions, uh, Michelle Morrison with the Regional Planning Council is here, as well as Dr. Son. So with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Howell, and, uh, Commissioners, I know I've spoken a little bit about this before, um, both, both to you and as well some of the other boards. Um, just very briefly going over some of the applicable portions of that bill. Um, now, first of all, that bill was approved on the last day of session before the, uh, session was extended. It was just approved by the governor on June twenty-sixth and, uh, has become a law now. Uh, so the meat and potatoes really affects, the rewrite is in the last section. There's, there's two provisions that affect comprehensive planning. Um, but one is prospective and one is both backward-looking and within a time certain, so I'll address the, the last section of that bill. And, and what that says is, it, it, it governs the entire state of Florida when it comes to local governments. Um, although the terms of the bill are, are couched in counties that were affected by federal disaster declarations for, for last year's three hurricanes, that effectively encompasses the entire state of Florida. So everyone, uh, is in the same boat, local government-wise, um, as far as regulation by this bill. Um, essentially, what local governments are prohibited from doing are enacting moratoriums um, on construction, reconstruction, uh, host of some other items, and developing procedural regulations, and developing or proposing or adopting any more restrictive or burdensome uh, regulations within a comprehensive plan or within, uh, the jurisdictions, local, um, within the, uh, land development regulations. Um, so that prohibition is in place. Um, quite interestingly, it is retroactive on, up to October first, twenty twenty-four, so it encompasses everything from last fall, and that runs until October first, twenty twenty-seven. So unless this, uh, this law is amended, uh, later on in session this year or, or next year, uh, these restrictions are in place, they're in place until twenty twenty-seven. Just as a very quick aside, there is also a forward-looking provision of the bill that I mentioned, and that will, um, without going into details, really, if there's a declaration that affects the city in the future, uh, hurricane, uh, declaration that affects the city in the future, the, the city would be prescribed from creating these regulations, adopting them for a period of one year. But in any case, that's really looking forward until after October first, twenty twenty-seven, since we know that this restriction's in place for that period from last August to October of twenty twenty-seven. Um, if you have any questions on it, I'd be happy to answer, uh, you know, anything, but that's really the, the crux of, um, what you're looking at as far as comprehensive planning and land development regulations.
Any questions for Bobby, or Michelle, or Andrew?
I just had a couple of questions, there's something that we discussed during the agenda review, um, just specifically to the data that's being used in this, some of it's from twenty twenty-two, some of it's from twenty twenty-three. Um, some stuff we can update more quickly, like, uh, the amount of permits have been filed and approved, things of that nature, so I just want to discuss how is it important to have the most recent data available since this is such a long-term plan? And, and why or why not?
Right. So primarily the meat and potatoes of comprehensive plan, when somebody is looking at it to evaluate whether a policy, a city's policies implemented related to a project, is the goals, objectives, and policies. So those are the things that would say you can have so much density in this future land use designation, that's an example. The data inventory analysis, that's the section that you're citing, it does support the GOPs, but eventually data next year is gonna be outdated. So we, as soon as it becomes available, if we get more up-to-date data between now and the adoption hearing, we can incorporate it in the D I A, and I believe Dr. Son is incor- uh, informing, but some of that's kind of easy to obtain, but some of it isn't so, like, for instance, population, that's gonna change tomorrow, things like that. The building permits, I mean, we can get that, but that's gonna change as well.
Well, and, and to that, and thank you for that, is I didn't, are we using the data that's within this to then plan other things like land development code or things of that nature, are we using the data that's from this then and pulling that to meet metrics?
Primarily the data that would be planned to do like a rewrite of the land development code, so long story short, I'm not trying to give super wordy amount of explanations, is that if the council chooses to adopt the comprehensive plan, we'll have to come back next year and do a rewrite of the code to make sure that the land development code's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Primarily, the land development code is a way to carry out policies of the GOP, or the, the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a policy document. So it's basically, the way I look at it is, when I grow up, uh, when I was a little kid, or when I grew up, I always wanted to be a firefighter. Well, it never happened, I became a planner, and being a planner is like working at Denny's, you never intend on being, working there, you just kind of fall into it, so. But the land development code is basically, you will do this. The, the comp plan is a policy thing, we want to be this, but then the land development code is, we will do this, you shall do this.
Okay, and then, so there's, there's some discussions on, kind of, specifically the one that I was, uh, going through is the reclaimed water pumping and storage facilities, and this states that Golden Gem facility is online, and that by the fall of twenty twenty-four, it says proposed in planning stages, high-service pumps and one tank to be completed by fall of twenty twenty-four. Again, we discussed this during, uh, my review. Those numbers are then calculated or to use into our capacity, uh, of new projects and, and annexations and ability to take on new properties, so I guess that's my concern of that, that specific facility, just using that as one example, that's not up and running, that didn't happen.
Yeah.
We know that, so should it be properly, or I guess, updated in this plan so that we're not using land development code, isn't saying, well, we have that capacity, when we really don't?
We could, and what we could do is if you vote to transmit this afternoon, between the adopt, between the, um, transmittal and the adoption hearing, we could update those numbers.
Okay, and then, and thank you for that. So and then, and again, I asked this during, uh, agenda review, is the, there's a lot of, uh, discussion in here of infrastructure plans between now and basically, I, I think it was twenty twenty-eight, was, was a gold date of some of the infrastructure updates specifically to, uh, some of the reclaimed water pumping, things of that nature and facilities. And, and that was something that, I guess, and, and this is, as, it's a segue into next week's, uh, budget workshops is, are our departments, with this being written, are they planning and budgeting properly for the next three to five years to get what's being accomplished or talked about in here done?
Right.
So I, I get it's a wish list, but at the same time, let's be realistic about it too, of that, are we gonna be able to spend whatever amount it is, do we have the money in place to do what's in this plan?
Yeah, and we had discussed this, it's based on the capital improvements program, budgeting and stuff like that, and I think that's every, um, if I recall, every five years per statute, you have to do a C I P update.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions for Bobby? Or the team? Okay. Bobby coming?
Albert McKemay, three six oh three Golden Gem Road, like to thank Mr. Howell for his expla- explanation of the difference between the comprehensive plan and the land development code. It's something that as a citizen, I don't always understand. What I do understand is that you today are being watched by people all over on YouTube. And what I'd like to make clear to them is that it would appear that the comprehensive plan is gonna limit some of what you can and can't do, because it said stop restrictive practices. Well, it also mentioned moratoriums. So by the sounds of it, the comprehensive plan is gonna limit what you can do in terms of preventing building. Therefore, the only comment I'm gonna make is it becomes even more important that when you consider annexation, that you consider that once you've annexed something, that your choices are gonna be severely restricted to what you can do.
Anybody else from the public? All right, if not, we'll close the public hearing. And if, well, first of all, I want to thank the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, uh, all their hard work. That's, gosh, how long have y'all been working on this, how many months?
Years.
Years, three years, thirty-six months, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's been a process, and we, we obviously couldn't have done it without your, your teams, and, you know, you got a lot of expertise down there, and so we appreciate, you know, your, your being a part of, of our, our rewrite, so thank you. So that, look for motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one oh one at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, ordinance number thirty-one twelve.
Ordinance number thirty-one twelve. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Reed Marvin Wade and Reed Susan Thomas, located at nineteen twenty Sheila Avenue, comprising forty point sixteen acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Good afternoon, this is Dr. Junson, planner at the Community Development Department. The applicant has requested annexation of the properties located at nineteen twenty Sheila Avenue. The total area of the properties is forty acre. The most of the properties are currently vacant with one currently used for residential purpose. Surrounding properties has a future land use of, and zoning for residential and agriculture. The annexation proposed for single-family residential development.
Is this the correct?
That's another one.
Yeah. Uh, in the packet, it's ordinance number thirty-one twelve, which is the annexation of nineteen twenty Sheila Avenue?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Or we just have the wrong slides under the?
It's the wrong slides, yes. What we can do is use the location map on the applicant's presentation, so we apologize about that.
Okay, I'll pull the, I support that, um, I made a mistake while prepar- preparing the presentation files, so, okay. So the surrounding property has a future land use and zoning for residential and agriculture, and the annexation is proposed for a single-family residential development for one hundred fifteen homes. Development Review Committee recommends approval and recommends the motion is to accept the first reading and carry over for second reading and adoption at July sixteenth city council meeting. Steps and. second reading and adoption at July sixteenth city council meeting. Steps and applicant are available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for June?
Jim, that, that little square, this, what, this has half purple, so is that being annexed as well? Is that a part of this project also?
Yes, the one with the pink square.
Yes.
As well as the blue square or X.
Do we have the, is there a range there? Which is the one that has the, the police range?
Yes, gun range is, um, about like thousand feet away from the properties.
To confirm, this already is an enclave, correct? A smaller enclave?
It is enclave, but, and annexation will actually decrease the annex, enclave.
So it's fixing somewhat of that issue and eventually the other properties in there may become part of the city as well, eliminating the enclave altogether?
Yes.
Okay.
But the county had signed off on the fact, the county signed off on the fact that it did not create an enclave. They said that it lessened an enclave, because that was our initial question. This is an enclave. They provided information that it's decreasing an enclave and therefore is not creating an enclave.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess Africa wants to come down and say something?
Sure.
Uh, good afternoon, mayor and city commissioners. My name is Jonathan Hules with the Louts Law Firm, two fifteen North Yola Drive, Orlando, here on behalf of the owners. And as June and Bobby has explained, we're here on the first step. There's three pending development or applications with the city right now. Uh, pending, this is the annexation, and this is to annex the property, uh, into, uh, the, the city and to follow would be the comp plan and the rezoning. I think this next slide might do a better, well, here's the, here's the one statement that I included in my presentation and when, uh, the app, the, the, the owner had a, uh, pre-app with the city, the city staff was very clear to say, hey, when we take on these types of annexations involving enclaves like we have here, that's, and this is a better illustration of it. Uh, everything that's color-coded is already in the city. They said, um, you need to go to the county and make sure you gets, uh, in, in writing a confirmation that the county doesn't have any issue with the annexation. And so we had spent some time working with both the county's planning staff and the county, uh, attorney on, um, presenting this, this annexation. It is a, uh, annexing a very large portion of an existing enclave. And therefore, um, the county and, and we believe it supports, uh, this section cited from the Florida statutes, which really is a mission statement to say when you can reduce or eliminate enclaves, you should do so. So this, uh, request is not, um, being opposed by the county. Um, they, I wouldn't say there's, you know, they, they are, they're, they, um, don't have an issue with it. I, I would say they don't have an issue with it. And so, um, you, as you could see here, the, the city currently touches the property on both the existing northern boundary as long, as well as the southern boundary and the southwestern section of, of the city. So, uh, comp plan and rezoning is to follow. Um, here's a conceptual development plan of the project. It's seeking residential low suburban, which just go back to this map is that yellow color that's shown on this map. So, uh, very consistent with other subdivisions that have been developed in the area. Um, to the, to the south is actually a higher density, uh, future land use designation of residential high. Um, and then here is what's being proposed with an RTF zoning, it's a hundred and fifteen single-family residential homes at a density of approximately, um, two point nine dwelling units an acre. So the lots would consist of sixty-foot lots and eighty-foot lots. Uh, about a quarter of the property is going to be retained as open space and it does preserve, there is an onsite wetland that's going to be preserved and not impacted through the proposed project. So that's a lot of information, more information that you need for what's being considered today in form of the annexation, but all I could tell you that we've reviewed all the criteria, applicable criteria, and we believe it meets all of them, including, um, reduction in size of an existing enclave. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Jonathan?
A couple, and thank you for, for this presentation too. Can you go back to the future land use map?
Sure.
Thank you.
That, yes.
Uh, yes. The City of Apopka Police Department gun range, are you able to point to that?
I will do my best based on my knowledge of where it's located. Uh, let's see, if I point here, does that show?
It's, I think it's off the screen. It's.
It's, I think it's up in this location in the crosshatch.
Okay, that was my understanding as well. Yeah, that's right.
It's over a thousand feet away. It's separated by an existing subdivision. My understanding is that gun range has been designed and operated consistent with all applicable regulations. Um, but, but, uh, that, that was a, a comment we received from the, the city's, um, police chief as part of our DRC review. Uh, DRC did recommend, uh, actually our DRC review of the comprehensive plan amendment. And, um, um, the request was to provide notice of the existence of the gun range in this vicinity to this subdivision and the developer, uh, is agreeing to do that. And so there will be notice provided.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I, for some reason I had it placed in my head, uh, directly to the west, which it's not. It's a, a neighborhood and then, um, to the north there. Uh, you, there's two other submittals you have currently with the city. Can you, and you said them, I just didn't write it down.
Yeah, sure. There, that's the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning. So this is to bring the property into the city. And then the next steps would be to actually assign, um, a fu- a future land use designation under the comp plan and then the rezoning.
Okay. Attorney hand, would those two submittals, do they come back, do they come back to us with SB one eighty?
The, I can answer that, I do. Yeah, no change in those processes.
That doesn't, it doesn't help expedite that process or that doesn't a- address the timing of that process at all, or those two? Okay. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions for Jonathan? Okay, anybody from the public?
Albert McKemay, three, six, oh, three, Golden Gem Road. I've got nothing negative to say about the development. In fact, it's one of the few occasions when I, when I see a point of annexation. Today's been very educational for a lot of us citizens, because sometimes we wouldn't understand about annexation. What I do see today is that it must be complicated for infrastructure to be developed when you have enclaves. Who knows who's going to be responsible for, for the infrastructure, for the sewage, for the water. So I'm presuming since it's already surrounded by, by city property, there's, there's already infrastructure in place there. But just a question for you guys. When we look at a map of, of Apopka in general, and we identify enclaves, should we not be already looking to see what infrastructure might be needed if, if and when those are annexed? So that we can get ahead of the curve and not always be behind it?
Rogers is back at Southern West Main Street. I don't have any objection to this, um, annexation, but this is something that you see that, like I said, reduce, reduction of enclave plus. Um, you look at it, it's fairly consistent. You got City of Apopka all around it. Um, of course you have, um, probably sewer water relatively close to the site. But this is the intent of clean annexation to where you're not extending yourself beyond your means. Because we come back, well, I hear you guys discuss all the time. You know, we need more infrastructure, but this is the phase where you really take a closer look at what you're annexing to make sure it makes sense. So for example, um, we're talking about annexation now. I know you guys are also going to come back and discuss, um, the extension with the um, JP interlocal agreement. In the interlocal agreement, all, all those, it was, um, they've identified several enclaves within City of Apopka. My question is too, the council as a whole, are you guys going to look to pursue to close up some of these enclaves? Or is it just going to still be more on voluntary annexation or developers coming forward? Is there going to be actually, I guess, a plan to move forward to reduce those areas? So I know this is kind of loaded question for the most part, but I think this is the time we really need to look at it because you keep hearing people discuss this matter. I went to a website where you guys do a strategic plan, and that's the question that's loaded up on there. Growth, uh, planning, infrastructure. So I think at some point in time, we got to really take a, a bite at the apple and put the plan to move forward. Thank you.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, standing for the schools again, hundred fifteen units means forty-seven students will be moving into our already overcrowded schools. Because we are one of the couple areas in Orange County are growing so rapidly, we have more trailers than any other part of this county. And the trailers are not, as I pointed out before and showed you documentation, are not as safe. They're more expensive to operate. And we're suggesting our kids to a more restrictive area and, and area that's not as safe. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a quick, um, additional note, uh, and you'll see it when, when the comp plan and the rezoning come back before you, but we did, as all development applications for a rezoning or a comp plan amendment have to do, submitted for and obtained, uh, a school capacity determination from Orange County Public Schools. And for this project, it shows that all three school levels have capacity. So capacity is not an issue for this project. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you. And then the, another question that was asked was the utilities, they're, they're easy and local to your site there?
It's my understanding that there's utilities running along Sheila, that that will be available to the, to serve this project. Thank you.
Alright. You don't normally let people come back for second bites of the apple, but go ahead.
Again, back, back the issue of schools also for the record. The aspect is Orange County has only turned down once in Apopka. Only one time has ever turned down the aspect of, of an oper- of approving of an, of a that's easy for me to say, approval of new homes. And they don't, the one time that they did, you guys voted and overrode them. Again, they're not as safe, they're more expensive to operate. Thank you.
Alright, close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one twelve at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So who?
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
It closes the enclave second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one fourteen.
Ordinance number thirty-one fourteen. In ordinance of the city council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending chapter six alcoholic beverages of the city's code of ordinances, adding definitions, establishing procedures, requirements, and standards for obtaining an open container permit, setting forth vendor responsibilities, amending article four use regulations of the city's land development code to clarify alcohol sale restrictions for mobile food vendors, providing for codification, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Good afternoon again, uh, mayor and commissioners. Radley Williams, interim city administrator. Uh, ordinance number thirty-one fourteen proposes to establish a standardized permitting process for open container consumption in designated public spaces. Uh, the ordinance does currently allow the city to, or does currently allow the possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages in open containers with public right-of-ways and other public spaces, um, with council approval. But there's no form or process in the code for how that, how somebody would go through that or apply for an open container permit. So that's really what was brought forth in the ordinance change. Um, section six dash three possession or consumption in public space was updated. And the open container permit procedure was put in, uh, put into the document. That includes application contents, uh, what's required for that, application submission, uh, review and approval. And that the, ultimately, the city council still needs to approve the container permit. But this just gives a form and function for, uh, a group to come, uh, with their special event request to request an open container with their event. And I do know at Agenda Prep, uh, some comments and some feedback, if you look at, uh, line two eighty-one through line three twenty-four, there's very similar language, almost copied language, uh, back to back regarding consumption in public areas, lots, et cetera, with outside lints, uh, outside licensed premises prohibited. And then also consumption in parking areas, lots, et cetera, adjacent to vendors premises prohibited. Both of these areas lived, lived currently in the code in different locations of the code of this chapter. Uh, they were put together in this area, um, but I do think we need some additional, um, guidance from the city administration, our city attorney's office on a little bit of cleanup on these two areas. But they were in the code, they are in the code as they stand right now.
Okay, any questions for Radley?
So you're, you're asking for the city attorney to even dive more into this and clean it up?
On those specific, in that specific section that the code currently has, that, that exact language in two different areas? Yes, I'd like them to, between now and the second reading, go back in at that area and, and clarify that.
So wouldn't it be best then to table this and bring it back to the?
This is a public hearing ordinance, so it is a first reading, second reading scenario. So any changes, comments, or anything we can bring back to the second reading for final adoption?
I think it would make sense. If we're going to make a tangible change to it like that, I think it does make sense to, to table it then. And especially that'll push it to the seven PM meeting, our next meeting, which will allow, uh, more public input as well. So I think that makes sense to get this finalized by the attorney and go from there.
And then come back.
So it will come back to this, it will come back to the next meeting regarding this for?
I understand. I want to do the first reading next meeting though. I think that makes the most sense.
To the next meeting.
Are there any?
If we approve it now, we're approving it as is. And so I would bring it back, I would recommend bring it back as a first reading with the changes.
I also agree with that. I think we should bring it back with the first reading with the changes as well.
Okay, public, comment?
Albert McKemay, three, six, oh, three, Golden Gem Road. Open carry containers in our current environment, where we have a lot of homeless population in Apopka, I can see creating a lot of problems. We also have to look at, close by here, where there are several places who are licensed to sell alcohol. But even if you were to allow open carry, there's just as many registered churches in the area. And there are already our statutes that deny you the right to carry alcohol in the vicinity of educational facilities and churches. So in looking at changing ordinances, we might as well have a close look at if we're going to change it just to serve as some of the local, uh, establishments around about here. Will it actually work?
Anybody else? Want to speak, Lesman? No, close the public hearing, look for a motion to?
I just have one more question too before we, uh, table this. Uh, was, uh, the police department, were you guys involved in conversations with this? Can, and I just have a couple more questions. You can come up here briefly. Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, the, with what we have now, whatever's in place now for approvals, because there's a process in place, how does that, how does this differ? Does it add more onus on officers now with this in place to then be enforcing another rule law?
No, it actually places more onus on the event coordinator. Uh, if you look at the ordinance, it basically is requiring them to establish the perimeter and post where the perimeter is. So it more, it provides our officers with a restricted area that we know where the out, open container has been approved by city council by a map that the, um, event promoter or coordinator, whatever they're listed as in there, um, has to bring to city council for approval for the open container ordinance. Uh, and with respect to the previous comments, it's, uh, selling within, um, church within a specific distance. I think it's a thousand feet of a church. Uh, but most of these places are going to have their alcohol license and be approved to sell alcohol in those locations. But again, it's a permit. It's a permitting process for an event and the And the onus really becomes stricter on the event coordinator to provide us with a map of the area and for them to outline that area, make sure that the guest attending the event, you know, it's posted so they have that. And then also it's clear for our officers to know where those event guidelines are.
Didn't we though, it shows that we're crossing out some stuff in here, lines two forty-three to two seventy-six?
Most of it's been moved, it's not really crossed out, I think it was moved further down.
Right, so they already did have that same requirements.
The other requirements apply to Florida statutes where business has to post in their business that you can't take an open container outside of their business. This is allowing through an event permit through the council to allow them to designate, the council to designate a certain area to take their open container. So the one part pertains to posting your property so that on normal circumstances, on every day-to-day operations, you cannot take an open container outside of their business or outside of their area that their license allows you, them to serve alcohol. This is allowing the city council to, like I said, establish an event area that's defined by a map, defined by postings, and it has to remain on site for our officers to be able to retrieve if needed to deal with.
Okay, thank you. And last time this was up, that we all had this discussion, it was specific to the farmer's market here. I know this is more broad and gives that runway of not just the farmer's market, but anybody effectively to be able to apply for this. So when that was brought up, it was the concerns of local business owners and things of that nature. If a map was touching their property, was close to their property, people were allowed to walk on. So they were concerned about if they had any liability or anything like that to those type of events. Are we putting any type of approvals from local businesses if it touches their business, anything like that? I mean, what type of?
Well, I think, you know, I'm not gonna speak on liability, that's why we have a city attorney sitting over there and it's not my place. But you all are proving the map. And if you have, people obviously have opportunities to come up and do public comment during your approval of these events and everything else. The event coordinator has to provide the city with liability insurance, which would carry over to something that happened from their event onto private property, if I'm not mistaken. I'll let the city attorney confirm that I'm right on that. So we're providing insurance, they're providing insurance to cover any acts that occur as a result of their event. And it's not just open container ones, we require that for events in the park where there's not gonna be alcohol served or anything else. That if that event creates a problem, then somebody, the city or a third party has recourse towards that insurance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody from the public we should speak on it? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to continue ordinance number thirty-one twelve to the July sixteenth meeting.
It's thirty-one fourteen. Open containment.
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-one fourteen, I'm sorry. Continue the ordinance number thirty-one fourteen to the July sixteenth meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number thirty-one fifteen.
Ordinance number thirty-one fifteen. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing a sunset date for article five of chapter sixty-six of the Apopka Code of Ordinances pertaining to local business taxes, providing for the automatic repeal of the requirement for local business tax receipts and all related provisions for the Apopka Code of Ordinances on October one, twenty-twenty-five, providing for codification, separability, conflicts, and an effective date.
All right, this was one that's brought to my attention, we've, you know, we've got some overlapping regulations and Radley, you, okay, anyway, that we've got, obviously our fire department does an awesome job every year. They go to all the commercial businesses within the city to make sure they've got their fire extinguishers up, make sure they don't have the doorways are secure, or they're open that you can get out, in and out. So we thought, why do we need the BTR? Why not just eliminate that, this redundancy in permitting? We've already got our fire department out there, if we need to add some additional, they could add up on their, on their report, they could add what kind of business, I mean, I know there were some things that were said from Antoinette about what we could add to that, the fire department's inspection to get those items that we need. But, you know, we've got two full-time people, almost two full-time people, and, you know, they're, the amount of time and effort, I can't tell you how many calls we get or I get, you know, I'm just got one, I've got one employee, I don't have any, I'm working out of my house, do I need to have a BTR? Whereas they, the same small businesses see value in the fire department coming out. So I think we, by eliminating the BTR, we eliminate the redundancy. We've got three counties in the area that have rescinded the BTR, so it's not without precedent. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
My concern was that three years ago, there was a necessity to hire a vendor to come in and actually look for the small businesses. And I believe this was done just right after COVID, that we hired the vendor?
Twenty twenty-three was when they started.
So it was right after COVID. So during, from twenty twenty-three to present, and then I know we were renewing the vendors, we were authorizing him to come in and continue the BTR. What changed between them, not then and now? Because I believe the fire department was always checking fire inspections.
Agreed, it's just that we, the amount of effort we put into the BTRs to get compliance is just, it's mind numbing. We get three, four, we have to send three or four emails out, we have to, you know, they have to come in and fill out the paperwork. And for some, you know, if it's nonprofit, they, you know, they don't pay anything. So there's just a lot of reasons why it, the redundancy there with the amount of cost that it's cost the city and also our small business owners here in Apopka, just think it makes sense to, if we need to add, you know, a line or two on the fire inspection, we can get the information that our economic development director needs and do it all at one time. Because they see, the small business owners, they see value in inspections, they don't see value in a BTR that all we are, it's just a money grab. That's all it is, money grab. We get you a feltless form, we take your money. So we eliminate it and we can reduce, streamline the regulations on our small businesses here in Apopka.
When is the contract up for this contractor?
It's the end of?
End of this fiscal year.
It does this week, so as of this week.
The fiscal year, end of this fiscal year.
All right, so the end of this fiscal year is September thirtieth.
Right.
So if we vote on this today and say, we're done, is this our first reading? What are we doing with the business owners from today on? Are we telling them as they come in, don't pay?
I think if it's, if adopted, the program with sunset, they wouldn't be really, I don't know how we'd compel them to come back in and finish if they have not already paid this year.
Well, we should, if we're considering this today, then we should actually be shutting down the department as of today. Because it's not fair to the business owners to come in and pay for a BTR if we're considering today to sunshine it at the end of the fiscal year and they're paying a renewal that's beyond the fiscal year.
So we could, that's the pleasure of the board, we could certainly, if it's the will of the council, to end it immediately upon the adoption of the second reading. I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Sorry, council, what I was, in conferring with your city administrator, the ordinance is definitely set up currently to become effective October first and not affect any business tax receipt issued up until September thirtieth. So if you want to look at something different and see if there are any potential issues, given that it is a tax and taxes are planned on a yearly basis, I mean, certainly that can be looked at. But, you know, that would require change to the ordinance, definitely.
Well, I think what we'd like to do is have that information, then as we plug it into what the fire department's doing, we'd have all that information. We've already, we're already started collecting, you know, the BTRs are ready. So it would be nice to finish it out, get that information that we would like. And then we build on the fire department's inspection that they do yearly.
I know, but it's still not fair to the business owner that he comes in tomorrow, he's got, I don't know, they renew the BTRs yearly?
Yeah, so I don't think we're gonna be collecting for the, we're not gonna be collecting for the following year, they're gonna stop collections.
Right.
So October first, yeah, so they're not, they haven't started.
Yeah, it starts again in October.
October.
Oh, okay.
So they would just be paying up for this fiscal year.
You've got some that have not paid yet for this current year.
Yeah, they don't pay in advance, trust me.
Right. Yes.
We don't, yeah, so they haven't started paying yet, so that's your concern, but yeah, they're not having to start paying yet.
Okay. That's my concern, I don't want someone to come in and pay and we're sunshine it and then they're like, well, you know, I'm paying for the next year.
No, it's on that fiscal year, yeah.
Well, and here's the concern too, I guess, with sunsetting this, they, yes, the fire department does do inspections, but they don't do home inspections and of home businesses, and that's something that is one of our biggest emerging industries is home, home small businesses. So we don't know what businesses then are operating within our city at that point. And our economic development director that we just stated, and she said there's such a value of having that list, the fire department is not gonna be able to fill that void of that list, and there's no incentive for anybody to come in to provide that. So we won't be able to provide a good service to the small businesses that are here that are starting and trying. We're just kinda saying just no, good luck, fire department, do your best, and let me add a little bit to your?
Do we invest in, in a system, right, where they can actually register the new businesses? I think that was something that the?
But there's no incentive for them to do it, I think that's the point.
Well, if.
There's no incentive, so that's, that's a point we should know, and it's obviously very valuable for our economic development director, she made the point that she needs to know who's operating within our city.
More so, she said that it was more so for not the financial impact, it was also just knowing who's operating the system.
No, I totally agree, but again, who's gonna, who cares to register if there's no incentive to register?
Well, there's really no incentive but payment for them.
There is, because, and then didn't we just create a new ordinance that said that BTRs now that you can go after property owners for non-payment of BTRs? So why do we do that ordinance on a coenforcement side? And then doing this less than a year later, it's inconsistent with what we've?
No, I think it's a change of, a change of looking at data and realizing that it's ineffective and it's?
How is it ineffective?
They're not paying it, if you look at the cost of kinda what's going on, it's costing the city more money to try to implement.
It's not costing the city more money.
Well.
The percentage of?
The percentage, it's just not working.
The problem is you've got the people that pay and you've got the people that don't pay, so.
But it's still two hundred thousand dollars that's adding to our, and it's more than that. By the end of the fiscal year, that's adding to our bottom line as well. So it's, we're able to then help the residents in that capacity. So are we finding two hundred plus thousand dollars somewhere else in our, in our revenue stream?
We've got, we've got, I know with Blanch, we worked on some numbers that will, yeah, that will make it a wash.
Well, Ms. Sherman, please.
Lance Sherman, Finance Director.
So where are we getting this money from?
As discussed during our briefing, what we are looking at is increasing the fire inspection fee to offset this, to make it revenue neutral.
So we're gonna only, we're gonna higher tax the brick and mortar retailer businesses, but then those at home, no tax on, we won't even know if they even exist.
That fee that we charge, I think, is sixty dollars, which is way low compared to others. It's sixty-six compared to others that are like a hundred and some dollars. So we really are not in the range with our peers, so it's something we need to look at anyway.
So I understand that, so we already need to look at it, so we're already below market and then we're already using the adjustment to get to market to offset now a reduction. So it doesn't seem to make sense that we're gonna use, we're already below market, we're gonna get to market and then use that to then reduce our revenue over here as well. So, and again, the economic development director very specifically stated, and she had touted that during our conversation as well, that the BTRs are so important, that data is so important, and we're not gonna have that without the BTRs.
I don't know if we're not gonna have that information without the BTR.
Well, nobody has a plan of how we're gonna get that otherwise.
Does this contractor have a system where he's tracking all of this information, the one that we have?
Chief, do you have, as far as what the fire department, why don't you come on?
And then while we're at, City Administrator Williams, do we have any reports or like kind of updates from the vendor, the BTR vendor, that either monthly, quarterly, annually, that they kinda, other than these numbers that have changed, I think, three times in the last three days? So I don't know the legitimacy of these, but do we have any of that that provides?
Yeah, these are the audited revenue numbers and expensive numbers, so I apologize, that was on me for, we had, I had sent the wrong attachment to the document. I'll have to look into with our community development department if there was a reporting function, I think it just came in as their revenue. Yeah, I don't know if it was annual or quarterly or what the process was.
Because I think he gave a presentation when he came back, placed a new and talked about, you know, what he's generated and all of that. So I think it is a reporting function, so it should be some type of database, and I apologize, I'm not at the podium.
But it should be some type of database of information. And at this point, it's a matter, we got to continue to maintain that database.
Right, so who's gonna do that?
And it may be with the staff.
So we're not actually reducing staff hours then, I mean, we're, we've outsourced it.
The staff is remaining, the staff that is working on this effort.
Well, we're, we've got to work through that with the fire department, so, you know, there'll be a?
So fire department's adding new staff?
No, I mean, we've got, we're doing, we're doing a fire permit or fire inspection every year. So, Chief, can I just clarify, fire portion, as far as the fires, independent, as far as the BTRs itself, we do rely on some of the data that does come over from the BTR, but we have our own directory for the businesses. Most of that stuff is just cross-reference from SunBiz. So when an employer goes in or a business registers with SunBiz, that comes to the city, they should be filling out their BTR and it's generated in our own system where we have our yearly schedules.
So you're getting an automatic update from SunBiz or is somebody going in to get any new applications from SunBiz in the City of Apopka?
That's what was happening upstairs, they were going into the system and putting in that information into OpenGov and then transferring that over.
So if we approve this, we're gonna be missing that component now of being able to give you updates, correct? And maybe that's not your?
Correct, yeah, we're gonna have to figure out internally as far as how we're gonna continue that part.
Okay, so we're just moving one expense to another, effectively, is that what's happening? We're moving resources from one department to fire department?
I think we're, the goal is to try and improve the experience for the business, small business owner and utilize the staff and the functions we have through the fire department, which we have to do those inspections regardless to use that function to then take that data for economic development needs.
So, but the chief just stated that he takes data that's provided to him from this department and runs with it from there, so who's gonna?
Right, that office currently sits in the community development, community development department, so it might still come from their department and be shared to the fire department. That's a SunBiz search.
I understand the search, but again, too, that you're only doing inspections, the fire department's only doing inspections on brick and mortar.
Correct.
They're not doing home businesses at all, internet-based businesses, things of that nature.
Correct.
So we're missing a major market, an e-commerce market of understanding that. So I don't know how we're gonna be getting those for our economic development director and their department to successfully build our city and build synergy with businesses, like she had said, to bring it from an e-commerce to a brick and mortar, which is what we want.
Right, and my hope, again, with Antoinette coming on, to really build that economic development department further from the good start we had with Michelle and provide resources that is attractive to those small businesses that might be homebound first to interact with the city through the economic development department and capture them that way, so.
I think we're, before Mrs. Forbes even gets her, I feel like we're I, I think we're, we're, before Mrs. Forbes even gets her, I feel like we're taking away some of her ability to succeed. And it's what she had stated both in her resume and here and in my agenda review that. This was something she uses as a platform for success for her city, for retail, for office. So I think we don't have a fully perfected plan of how we're going to fix this. So I don't want to just remove this without a plan of how this is going to be implemented long term. And, and I'm concerned about the fire department, they're fully capable of doing a lot of things. It's just, they don't have the staff either to just add on a whole new department effectively. Unless we're going to budget it, which I don't know if we are budgeting for that, uh, a whole new department that runs.
Wouldn't be a whole new department. We have one and a half staff members in community development that, that do the BTRs now. Plus the contractor, but.
Well, and, and we don't want to miss the fact that it's not just businesses that are getting these business tax receipts, but it's also nonprofits, churches. And, and so it's not everybody that's, that's generating income that's having to do this. And so it's not just businesses. And, and I'm sure that there has to be a way that we can keep track of the, these businesses without having to, to tax them. In order to do what they're doing. And so we're taxing nonprofits and, and churches and, and everybody else. So it's not just.
And I don't disagree, that's not, I completely agree. I guess, this is the conversation. What's the mechanism that we can get them to, to, new businesses to still register with us?
Wasn't there a system that was created? I just can't remember that system that Michelle.
I, it's not ringing a bell when you say that, so I'm not, it's not hitting for me, so I don't.
Do you guys remember?
We can, we can definitely look at.
The thing is, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Nestor, um, when we had. The hire that, uh, the new economic developer come up here, she said. One of her tools and resources are the BTRs. And, um, what we can't seem to figure out is how do we capture the, the businesses that start from home? Because the only thing that we know, we realize that there is a business at a home is through the BTR. So if we take this away, we're going to lose that whole segment of e-commerce that is from the home.
But, but aren't, aren't they required when they start a business, before they can even register it? SunBiz, they have to register with the city and with the county.
They still need to register.
So that information should be there. Because when I went to the county to get a, a business tax receipt, they told me I had to have one from the city of Apocca first. And that before he registered with SunBiz. So there should be records.
Well, no, SunBiz you can do without a BTR. They don't require a BTR to, uh, apply for an LLC, nonprofit, any of that. That's not a requirement to become. No, I can get on, we can register, all of us can register an LLC right now on SunBiz without having any BTRs.
But we can just require a registration.
But I guess what's the incentive? I agree. And that, so something, and it just hit me, and that's why I was going back in my notes. When I was speaking to Mrs. Forbes yesterday, she had discussed, and, and I was hoping she'd be here for this, but maybe next week. That there's like a reimbursement component in St. Cloud or, or something that she's done. So you still get that, you can capture the information and reimburse it. So we're not tax, retaxing, but you're not taxing. So you want that incentive to still get the information, because nobody's going to do what they don't have to do. So what can we do? And again, I think that's the problem. I don't want to just get rid of this without having that new plan in place. Of how we still capture and create a successful plan for Mrs. Forbes to come in and, and be successful. And I think having her input is very important on this, specifically too, especially she had discussed, and I don't remember, I wrote it down, reimbursement of the BTRs. So I don't know what that plan was. That's, that's why she's the, she has the experience and education in it. So I think possibly wait for her to come back to be able to give her, um, input and experience. And again, she spoke specifically about reimbursement, so it's, and I don't know what that threshold was to get the reimbursement. But it's still created enough incentive for people to come in to do the BTR and then some type of, uh, reimbursement down the road. Uh, which I'm totally open to. I think that's it. Again, I, it's how do we capture the information, the data that we need for a successful economic development department? But also not overtaxing, unnecessarily tax our small businesses, nonprofits, et cetera.
I think registration, requiring them to register, requirement to register. They're just not paying us.
But what's the incentive? Again, I'm.
But if they're, if the requirement is registration, that's a requirement.
What's the?
I mean, the business tax is receipt, it's just, we're just collecting money. They're not getting any benefit other than us collecting.
We are, we're getting that data. So it forces, but I'm, so I'm okay to reimburse them at some point.
But if we're saying that the requirement is still to register, you still, is required to register your business.
But what if I don't? I guess that's the point.
What if you don't pay your business tax receipts?
Well, then we have a, we.
Now we just recently.
Exactly, so that's why, so.
We can do the same thing, if you don't register your business.
Okay, hold on, let's talk about that then. Let's go down that alley. So, but it would still, so, but then what would be the mechanism, I guess? It would still be a code enforcement issue. And what capacity, I guess, how would you enforce it? And how do you know that they are registered or not registered? How do you prove they're in business? SunBiz, I guess?
Same what we do with business tax receipts. We're just not paying.
We would have to adjust the, uh, the ordinance for code enforcement. Because it's specifically, it's specifically says BTRs, so we'd have to amend that. But then. There's still some onus on code enforcement then at that point.
All right, well, we'll go to public comment and we can come back, bring it back.
Okay, Albert became a three six oh three Golden Gem Road. I still see some benefit in business tax receipts. Okay, it's a form of taxation, but so was red light cameras until it may have rescinded them. So why would I advocate BTRs? Because we should be able to subcontract out the collection of any money. That should be brought in just in the same manner as we provided a contract to, uh. A company who went through the SunBiz records and gave us the information of people who had applied to SunBiz, SunBiz. But didn't have a BTR record. So why not just do the same thing? If it's going to cost the city money to, uh, do the, the work and it's not worth it. Well, why don't we just keep the BTRs in place, but subcontract out the collection of the revenue to someone else? That we were still taking a percentage of the revenue, but we're, and, and we, we benefit from all the information. That they collect, it's still delivered to the city. As the BTRs, the reason I like them is because it allows another level of security in the operation of businesses. It lets us know who's operating a business. When it's on trust only, we really don't know who's operating a business. We don't know what's happening. With a register of businesses that, that the guy in the street can go to, he can look up and say, oh, yeah, that's a bona fide business. And if you were going to be administering grants, would you not be looking up the BTRs to see who was a business? Be the first thing I did, and now we're advocating getting rid of them. I say we, we keep the BTRs. If you want to, uh, reduce the cost of the BTRs, fine. But the information that come from them is an excellent source. Also, what I disagree with is their transient businesses come in. They don't have to operate with a BTR, and I think that's unfair in, in terms of the businesses that are already here. So, you know, there's no onus on the farmers markets. Anyone that comes in there who has a food van, who comes in from out of town. They don't have to have a BTR. That's not fair and equitable.
Rogers Beck at Seven West Main Street. Um, as much as I would like for you guys to eliminate the business tax. Cause I, I, I wish not to pay them, but, um, there is a need for, and I'm going to explain to you why I think so. All right, so if you don't have a business tax receipt that you needed, you open up a business. Usually when you come in and open up your business, you have to go to zoning to get certain things written off. To let you know that this business can go into the location. If you eliminate that, you have no mechanism to capture that. Secondly, um, there again, you had the economic development director explain to you guys how she used the information from the BTR. To help the businesses communicate one another. So you're going to take away that component. If you have a system that can do that, I guess that's great. But maybe the reduction in the amount that you're paying may be adequate. Instead of it being seventy, eighty, hundred bucks, or whatever it may be, maybe it's just a twenty-five dollar registration fee annually. If you don't know what you want to do with the money, well, then you put the money into a pool that can benefit the businesses in Apocca. What do I mean by that? You may bring in someone to do a workshop, it may be on taxes, or it may be on incorporation. There's things you can use the money for other than just staff purposes. Um, so it's, there's a, there's a, it plays a benefit and a role in how you capture and what you do with the money. Now, what you don't want to do is, there again, eliminate this whole process. And then it affects the person that we're hiring to do her job in the best, her abilities. Now, if there's other resources out there she can use, but I just think that as much as I would like to. I get tired of fire department come knocking on my, my office door and checking my fire extinguisher. I'm an office, I only have paper in here, right? But I do believe there is places that they need to go to do an adequate inspection. Because that, someone next to me could have something that's very dangerous. So there does play a component in it all, but I think we should really vet the discussion and understand what are we trying to accomplish? By just eliminating it, because I think I asked this question maybe two years ago on what was the money used for, right? I think it said just a general fund. So if you're saying right now that you don't need the money, general fund, put into a pool of money. It could be for your nonprofit organizations or kind of, well, I'm not even going to say nonprofit, because they ain't paying the BTRs, no. But.
But they are.
They are. No, but they pay, it's a five dollar fee.
Okay, then, if that is the case, all right, they can get some of the money. Um, but there again, I just think it should be a mechanism, if you do reduce the fees. Hey, that, that allows for the city of Apocca to give different resources for businesses that's starting up. Because therefore, if you don't go to SCORE or some other organization in Orlando, you really don't have any resources here locally. That will help you as a small business, because I know my, in my journey in this thing, I've been figuring out for like twenty years, I feel like. But there again, there is a need, there's a component, it's just the amount of how you want that to play, to affect the player, I mean, the citizens and the whole thing.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Roman Hills Lane. I just kind of, as a taxpayer, a little concerned, some of the things, first of all, we should be reclaiming the cost. If not, the cost goes to the current taxpayers as opposed to the new business. I want to have new business come in to look at that. But we got a new economic development director coming in, would I be letting her weigh in? What have we done? Have we talked to the Chamber of Commerce with regard to what their input may be, as well as looking at other communities? And what are we doing elsewhere so we are competitive? Thank you.
Real quick, uh, I wish, uh, Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs, I wish we can roll back the tape. Where we can actually play the meeting where we brought the BTR on board. How the gentleman who we brought in to, to handle everything, how he wanted a three-year contract. And we had to fight to say, oh, no, just one contract. Uh, how he was planning on turning over every rock and make sure he find every business that was operating in the city of Apocca. Make sure they pay their dues, go back and they do back. What was it purpose then? Was it to seek money? Or was it to help the, the businesses? And now I'm looking at a complete three hundred and sixty degree double take. We don't need the program. And you thank God to the citizens that we don't like to listen to. And P. Buck Gallery just explained to you why it's important to have it. Now, I do agree with Commissioner Anderson here. And everybody don't told you how useful it is, just reduce the fees. Keep it in place and just reduce the fees. Or is there a, a hidden problem that we don't, we don't, we're not privileged to? Do we have any issues with the contractor, who we had a contract with? Those are the things that make you scratch. I don't have that hair, man, but those are the things that make you, you know, pull your hair a little bit. Because we always have to second guess what is coming from you guys. We always have to vet the information that's being given, because that's the atmosphere that you have created. So we have to, is it live or is it memorex? Is it fake information, fake news, or is it facts? Is it truth? Those are the things that I sit back there and try to vet for the citizen of this community that used to supposed to be doing. I take my time out. Nobody's paying me for this. It's just being a concerned citizen. Everything that you just heard is the reason why we should keep it in place. And what Commissioner Anderson said, when you're right, you're right. I give you credit for it. Just reduce it. Five dollars, ten dollars, just to keep the program going. But we need all of that vital information, and what Commissioner Nestor was saying. We just hired a economic developer director. And we cut off at knees, because what she just said when she came here. So, you know, when, when you look at things and you look at it through the eyes of everybody else, it's like, okay, make it make sense to us.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, close the public hearing. A couple of things that we need to, to, to realize is that Orange County still has a BTR program. So they're still charging. So they're, they're, if, if you want to use Orange County as your, you know, uh, your way to look at, at BTRs. The problem is it's, it, there are the people out there that are paying the BTRs that doing the right thing. And then there's a whole bunch of people that don't, and we, we keep fighting to try to get the money from the, so that everybody's paying their fair share. And they don't, they don't do it. And we fight every year to make sure that people paying this BTR. Just eliminate it, add a little extra onto the, the fire inspection fee. And we'll get the, the same, same benefit to the, to the, the taxpayer. Taxpayers getting a benefit from when the fire department goes out there. They're getting zero benefit from the BTR, zero. And, and why we just don't want to get rid of this and just let, let the department, the fire department take on that responsibility? Make sure that our, our, our brick and mortars, that they, they're operational. I mean, it, 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 it's just for efficiency, for, for, for the ability for us to. You know, attract those small businesses. Yeah, if I don't have to have a BTR in Apocca, I might come to Apocca. So, yeah, it's not a big number, but you, if you're going to lower the number, that makes absolutely zero sense. Because that means fewer people are, are gonna, gonna find, you know, fill out the form, like, it's only ten bucks, I'm not gonna fill it out. And so that, that just, it's a self-defeating prophecy if we reduce the, the rate on the BTR, but.
But isn't that what you, the whole goal of this is to reduce it?
Eliminate it.
Correct, so you're reducing it. And previously, your administration pushed so hard, and it was attorney Rodriguez that pushed like crazy for this. To come into reality, because you weren't charging it, uh, previously.
No, we, we're charging it, we just weren't collecting it.
So, no, we definitely are. You can see twenty twenty-three, a hundred thousand dollar increase there. So there, there was an increase in that, and I think it'd be very valuable, not I think, it will be valuable to have Mrs. Forbes' opinion on this. To see what she has to say and really to see, can she come up with a different idea, or I'm sure she can. What different ideas does she have in play that she's already implemented for this exact thing? This is not new to her by any means. So what does she have to say? And then how can she craft this differently to have a plan in place where we don't just remove it and say, fire department, figure it out? It's, we can remove it and here's the plan that is going to be perfectly put into place. And it keeps her successful and her department successful while serving our small businesses, our new businesses, our e-commerce. Uh, it builds synergy within the community. We need her input on this very directly to see what her plans are, should this go through.
And I agree that the information is, is important, and, and I don't want to put in more work on the fire department than what they already do. Uh, but I think there's a way to collect the same information. And in addition to that, that there, when they go on SunBiz, they simply collect the names of every individual that. Has a SunBiz account that has an Apocca address, but it's not doing business in Apocca. So they're just getting the address because the, the address is in Apocca, but they may be doing business in New York, Orlando, someplace else. But I think the information is vital. I just think there's a, a better way to get that same information. So that the economic development director will have the information she needs.
Which, and I agree, I want to hear from her, then what can she do? And that vendor very specifically stated when he was here, that he has proprietary system that finds these and is able to, to really figure out which business. He, he specifically said that over and, over and over. So he's got to be doing something other than just going to SunBiz, uh, is how he sold it. So it can't just be going to SunBiz. Um, so that's the whole thing. We were pushing so hard for this. And again, I, I'm, there, my ask and request is to table this until Mrs. Forbes gets here. To get her opinion and have, let her get a plan in place, so we're not just saying, hey, day one. You don't have this very important tool for your success for our businesses and our residents. That's my ask, is, is let's table this until she gets here.
Well, here's what I'd like to do, is, is to go ahead and pass it on first reading, and then we'll wait till the second reading in August.
No, same thing we just did on the other one.
I'll tell you the truth, when we had the Friday, when the agenda dropped, that we all got to see it. I'll tell you the truth, when we had the Friday, when the agenda dropped, that we all got to see it, it was the first time that I was really surprised. I said, why all of a sudden are we sunsetting local business tax? Like, there was never a discussion that we were dissatisfied with the service of the vendor or that.
He, he's done his job. I'm, we're not, I'm not arguing with him.
And we're still taxing the businesses.
Yeah, so.
It's just more so on the brick and mortar businesses than it is all businesses. It's, this is like a more a direct approach, only impacting retail business office. Cause now it's gonna be an increased fire fee.
So when is her start date?
Uh. Monday, August fourth.
August fourth. So again, I, I don't like voting on something where some changes may come from it, but she was specific today to say that this was a tool that she relies on. It's a tool that she relies on. So I don't want to vote to say that sunshine it and she comes in and says, no, I, I can use it and maybe we can streamline it. Um.
She can come up with a different plan. Let her, let's not take away one of her tools. Let her, hey, this is the, the rough way we want to go. How can you still be successful in your business or in your, uh, department with us taking this away or moving it or doing something? I think it's very important to get her, her input on this, uh, from the beginning.
So that, my, my ask is just to, to bring it, we pass it here today on first reading and then bring it back on August the sixth, which you'll be, she'll be on board. Obviously, she, she's watching the, the council meeting, seeing what we're doing and then she's got any, any ideas, we can, we can, we can.
Well, let's just table it until then. Let's just table it until August sixth, which is the first meeting there.
I would rather table this till the first meeting in August gives her time. If she does recommend any changes or she, I, I says, I don't need it as a tool, then we can do the first reading with her input and the second reading would be in.
August as well, August twentieth, yeah.
Right. Will still be before October first.
Mayor, just to, uh, the timeline on that might be tough.
Right.
Because she'll start on the fourth, the agenda will already be out.
Yeah, that, we just said that she's watching it, so how, I don't understand that's any different than what we were just, how is tabling it to that, but reading it now and then second reading then, any different?
I'm saying that August fourth date is, or the August sixth date is tough.
Are you not anticipating her to be here at this meeting?
Then let's do August twentieth.
There you go. Take, that gives her two, three weeks. Yeah, there you go. Well, okay. I'll move to table this to August twentieth, seven PM meeting.
The problem is, are we gonna be running into getting it done so we've got no issues with the October?
I mean, for budget revenue purposes?
Well, and, and not only that, but just the, the, we, we need to roll, if we're gonna roll it out, we need to roll it out.
The renewal, the renewal request for if it stays? Yeah, typically it happens now. So pause that for.
So just pause it. Pause renewals for now.
Uh, in regards to the budget, um, we're having the workshop start next week. Sent the message, we'll be back, I hope we don't come back to September. We may have some other workshops pertaining to other issues, but we'll have September to clear it up. Any changes will be reflected in the final budget.
In September?
Yes.
So this works out, the timeline works perfect then?
Yes, that's budgetary now.
Yeah, understood. Perfect. Alright, we have a motion for August twentieth at the seven PM meeting.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner, that's to table it.
So August twentieth?
Yeah, got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith, all is in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries on. Okay, ordinance number thirty-one sixteen.
Ordinance number thirty-one sixteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apocca, Florida, amending chapter fifty-four Retirement Systems by amending Article Four Police Officers Retirement System, sections fifty-four through one twenty-seven vesting, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and setting an effective date.
Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Um, back in April, we amended the police retirement to allow the police chief to opt out of the retirement system if they so choose in the future to, um, go into an investment plan. Um, what we didn't think of at that time was, um, if they come from internally, they are contributing to the retirement system. And the way the language is currently written is they have to sever their ties with the city to get that money that they're currently contributing to the retirement system back. This allows the police chief, if they choose with, and make the determination within thirty days of becoming the chief, to go into the investment plan to get their, uh, contribution back immediately so they can either invest it in the investment plan or they can take it or they can split it however they want to do. But it gives them an opportunity to immediately get their, um, money that they are currently contributing to the retirement system so it can be handled through the investment or whatever they choose. Um, otherwise you have to wait until they're terminated, it stays in there. Or until they, not terminated, but until they sever their employment with the city. So this just cleans that up a little bit and gives the, um, future police chiefs an option.
Any questions for the chief? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? Not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one sixteen at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alaska, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries on.
Thank you.
Next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apocca, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you, Susan. Um, Blanche, Chairman Finance Director. Again, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, amendment number eleven in the amount of two point five million. This is pertaining to the grant that we brought before you and you approved. At the previous council meeting, we now have a fully executed agreement in the amount of two point five million with no match requirement. This is pertaining to Border Lake, um, Lake Cortez, Piedmont Lake and Lake Page, the hit, the flooding and the impact of the, on the roadways and businesses and restaurants, um, residents, I'm sorry, um, during, um, severe storms. The grant includes replacing, uh, pump, having a pump station, constructing a pump station, intake pipes and discharge lines at each lake within the project area.
Any questions for Blanche?
I just have a couple of questions and I asked, I think most of these during my agenda review. The, it was last week I had requested the, uh, application of this grant.
Correct.
And you had educated me yesterday that it was, this is an application, it's a.
A portion.
A portionment?
Yes.
Okay. And that was from twenty twenty-three, correct? It was from twenty twenty-three?
We started this in twenty twenty-three, yes.
Okay. And so that's what, this is finally just shoring up for that then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, when we applied for that, was that specific to, or when this discussion came into play, it was gonna be specific to this project or was it somewhat of an ambiguous? It can be applied to anything that has to do within the, uh, Wakaba Springs region, Aquifer Recharge and Flood Protection Project? Can it be any of those, like anything within that area?
We can do anything within the scope of the grant, which is, as I understand it, as I just mentioned, it pertains to these border lakes, Lake Cortez, Piedmont Lake. But the grant specifically says is to design and construct pump stations, intake pipes and discharge lines at each of the lakes. So it has to be.
But we got this and, or we applied or it was a portion in twenty twenty-three? That plan didn't come to fruition or even come into play until this year?
You said from twenty twenty-three and why we just now finalizing the grant agreement?
Not so much that, but how did they know that this was gonna be the plan when that plan came into place this year?
I think we've always had issues with Border Lake, as I understand it, even before I even came on.
But the, the pumping, uh, from lake to lake to lake, that just came into play?
Well, we had to develop a work plan, okay?
The, the, there's two different things. That's the short-term solution is the pumping from lake to lake to lake.
Okay.
But this is the long-term solution.
Yeah, this is the long-term solution. The pumping that we're doing to reduce it right now, that's under the hundred K that was approved. This is the long-term solution.
Okay. So then with this then, does this include any ability to, we're, we're gonna have to purchase property for this site, for the pumping station, correct?
I don't think we're purchasing any property, we just gotta get the right to use.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the right to use.
And we, do we have those already?
No.
No, this is, this is, like I said, we just got the executed agreement. You approved it last council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I'm incorporating the money in the budget now that we have all that so we can start this process.
So, no, I, I completely understand that. It's just what, I guess, where's our next steps with this? Just to, is the ball rolling on this? That, have we done anything to plan this?
Meeting, this is probably gonna take about eighteen months. We got to start the, they got to develop the scope for the design and with step by step.
So we won't see this finished until December of next year?
Yep.
Yeah.
Potentially. Glad, do you mind?
I, I can give the timeline that we, we talked about in the kickoff meeting. Design permittinging estimated three to six months. Uh, construction bid awarding two to three additional months and then construction six to nine months with that eighteen month total estimate. And as Grant, or as Blanche, uh, mentioned, uh, that was provided in the scope as well, uh, along with estimated amounts.
The work plan.
Okay, so it's still, it looks like December of next year, of twenty-six.
Yeah, potentially, you know, if we, we get the design done, nothing stops us from doing it.
Quicker, no, absolutely. Okay, now I'm just trying to understand again to, to help articulate this to residents when they're asking what that, what it looks like in timeline, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Any other questions for Blanche? Okay.
Albert McKeemay, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. I see it said it will reduce the dependence of two drainage wells. Uh, again, what does that really mean? Because we're speaking today about things and, and my guess is Commissioners really have a limited knowledge of where this is going, where the water's gonna go and, and what actually, what it means. I don't have a clue and I'm reasonably well-versed in these things. I know for a fact that when you discharge into wells, and it's not a well, it's a drainage well, you need, you need paperwork from, from St. John's or from the Environmental Protection Agency. Where is it we're actually gonna pump this water to? And how much is it gonna cost? And if it necessitates the water coming through highways or under highways, how long is it likely to take to get the permitting for that? Because I did suggest there was potentially another solution at the last meeting. Uh, and funnily enough, some former fairly high-profile city residents and ex-city employees contacted me and made some further suggestions and said that as far as they could see, some of the plans that I was suggesting to the city were really, really good ideas and that I should push forward to, to try and help with the city and make the suggestions. But again, we're limited to the knowledge that we're given by saying it's gonna reduce the dependency on two drainage wells, that tells me nothing.
Okay.
Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Reach. Real quick, um, two point five million dollars. Now, I wish I can roll the tape back again. When we had the news media here, when we had the flooding and all the hoopla was going on. One thing I pointed out is that we had Orange County engineer and we had the city engineer working together to try to come up with a solution. And the mayor pointed out that this been going on since two thousand nineteen. So since two thousand nineteen and we at two thousand twenty-five now, now we got two point five million dollars, we should have a concrete plan. And to Commissioner Nestor's point, what he was trying to say, okay, on this grant, the grant's supposed to be specific to tell you what it could be used for. And so if we didn't have, if we don't have a solution to the problem, how we know what to use it for? So now I guess we're gonna put our heads together in a short period of time that we couldn't do from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-five and come up with a solution to the problem. So I would hope that there's some transparency to this. And the last time I asked, I asked the engineer that was here to get up and, and explain to us or tell us what y'all had come up, working together, what solution you had come up with. That wasn't done. You can go back and run the tape, that wasn't done. So now we got two point fi, two point five million dollars. The last thing that need to do is be wasted on something that don't work. And now the community is back into the same place. When we have another rainstorm, we got another flood. Because we didn't do our due diligence on coming up with a permanent solution that would fix the problem now that we got the money. So mayor, I ask, just like now, you had the residents to come up and tell you, you know, give you some great ideas with the BTR. You just act like you didn't hear that. So the advice that the citizens are coming up and giving you that, that's the strength of your community, mayor. We as, when we are moving forward, it's the strength of the community. We have so much experience, so much talent out here in the community. If we don't use that to better our community, we turn a closed eye to better our community, that's not leadership. That's not leadership. And see that decorum you was talking about? You playing like you don't even hear me. You looking down, you reading some, I, I'm not even speaking. That's the respect that you give me. But I can tell you one thing, change will come. I hope that's the last time you sit in that seat.
Anybody else?
I have a question about, so the, Mr. Brooks, maybe this is for you. Mr. Vlad, this maybe this for you. It's, it's part of our conversations yesterday. If you can just walk me through it so I understand the plan completely here. If you can come up here, just answer a couple of questions for me. Thank you. The, we're gonna create basically like an onsite, it's, uh, wa, it's not a wastewater, it's a stormwater treatment plant effectively, correct? Is that the correct term?
It's gonna be a pump station that will pump the stormwater into the Sunshine Water Pipeline that goes to the wastewater treatment plant.
On Cleveland?
Yes, so it's not gonna be connected to the wastewater system. It will go directly into the ground storage tank that stores the water for the reclaimed water.
Okay, and then.
From there, it will be further pumped into the public access.
Back into, for basically reclaimed use or irrigation, things of that nature. At Cleveland, do we have the capacity to take on that water now?
Yes, into the ground storage tanks, yes.
Now, there's, there, to put water into that ground storage tank, it, the water needs to go through a process. That process will be done, uh, at the pumping station.
Correct, the filter system will be at the pumping station, which is at Border Lake.
Correct, so it'll all be onsite there, get introduced to the system, c, clean.
Correct.
Effectively.
Yes.
Okay. And then walk through, we don't need to go through the calculations because you went deep with calculations yesterday, but effectively that, that pipe is sixteen inches?
That's a sixteen inch pipe, correct.
And remind me of the vendor that's already pumping in that?
Uh, typically with a five feet per second, which is usually used for a water models, you can pump about four point five million gallons a day.
Okay.
Through that.
And you said the current vendor's pumping?
About two point nine.
Two point nine?
That's in their agreement, correct. So they can pump more than two point nine. And we, we will need approximately, with an eight-inch connection, maybe one point one million gallons a day.
Okay, so ample capacity already exists.
Correct.
The, the caveat there though is that we wouldn't be able to be pumping at the same time. That, that, that vendor, and I can't think of their name right now.
Uh, Sunshine Water.
Sunshine Water, thank you.
Former utilities, Inc.
Yes, they would have priority to pump. So if they're pumping, we can't pump at that time, correct?
Yeah, so the plan will be that we pump down the lake approximately two feet during the dry season, just before the rainy season starts. So at that time, we see almost no water coming from Sunshine Water, right? Because they, they have the same struggle, they have to use it for irrigation.
Sure. So there, so we're gonna have a plan in place that'll pump water early, so to speak, to be able to kind of get ahead of them pumping. It'll already be cleaned, it'll go into Cleveland ground storage tanks and then be reintroduced to the system from there to, to be sent out to our residents.
Yes.
Okay. And, and all the connections are already in place for all of that. It's just other than the eight-inch pipe that'll come from Border Lake to the pump to.
Correct.
The sixteen-inch pipe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for either Blan or? Okay, alright. Um, yeah, I just just so. Been a while ago, I get um, we sent out a letter to the the different folks that have an interest in. The Border Lake flooding and so just so you know, we've got a meeting, I think next week from Thursday with a week from tomorrow with um. With um. DOT to talk about, you know, their 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 support of this project. Um, we still gotta get with Orange County. I've got. Uh, you know, a cursory letter from the mayor. They're looking into it, uh, because we've got. The way we what we've we've looked at is it's about a, well, whatever the number is, uh, we've got. City of Apopka to be at twenty seven point seven percent um of of whatever the the total cost is. Orange County forty seven point five. Seminole County uh thirty five percent, FDOT eight point seven percent, come up to a hundred percent, but. We go back to, I know everybody's talking about the why why hadn't we done anything before now? Well, just to so you know that in. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two, I went to Tallahassee to try to get money for this project. I finally got it in two thousand twenty three. So as soon as we had Ian, which is the last big event we had. Uh, we needed, we knew we had a problem and we needed this to resolve. It's taken me that long to get the funding from the state under a a local appropriation. So it it's not like we hadn't been thinking about it. I mean, county, you know, has gotten, you know, engaged here lately, which, you know, it's great. Glad they're finally engaged with us, but I've been at this, uh, and even though we're less than, we're almost a quarter of what. The the uh, the basin of uh. Border Lake and Lake Cortez, so. With that.
You said you got a letter from Orange County Mayor, Mayor Demings? Are we able to get a copy of that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. If you can just circulate that, Mr. Williams. Thank you.
Alright, looking for a motion to approve. The budget amendment uh twenty twenty five dash twenty four. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Second by Mr. Smith, all is in favor. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, why don't you start us out?
Alright, um, first of all, I'd like for us to uh send our condolences to one of our city employees, Mr. Tim Ford. Uh, his mother passed this week, uh, so we'll send our condolences to that family. And um, and then in reference to the to the schools, uh, we talked about the overcrowding. I've been kind of keeping up with that and. Orange County has hired a consultant to go out to recruit students to come back to the schools. Because the school enrollment is at an all time low. And so they're gonna be laying off teachers and other personnel as a result of that. So our schools are not going to be overcrowded. Uh, principals have been asked to. Reduce their budgets for this upcoming school year as a result of that. Uh, so just want to be aware of that and. And partly it's because of the. The the ability for parents now to get grants money to either send their kids to private schools or to homeschool them. And so school enrollment is dropping drastically. And so the overcrowding is not as what it appeared to be in the past. That's all I have here.
Okay, Commissioner Nestor.
Uh, first off, just wanna state, uh, you know, my office hours, um. I actually I need to postpone them for tomorrow, uh, due to I was unaware that the city hall was gonna be closed, um. I guess for Fourth of July and and recognition of that, um, I just wasn't sure which. Was unaware of which federal holidays we're recognizing, not recognizing to close uh. City Hall, Juneteenth, I I would thought that we were gonna close city hall and so I canceled my office hour, postponed my office hours and realized that we weren't. So I just wanna get on the same page of which holidays we are recognizing and not to close city hall from. Um, but I will be resuming my uh office hours next week, July tenth. From eleven AM to one PM here at city hall. Again, if anybody's uncomfortable coming to city hall itself, um. I'm happy to meet anywhere and and many have taken me up on that as well recently, so happy to to meet there, but excited for office hours. They've been very, very successful recently. Um, the next one, I mean, this just came up today is that Mayor, you made a comment that people are sitting down during the um. Pledge of Allegiance or or what have you and it's not our purview as a council to. Take an opinion on some of these constitutional rights, so uh, wanna make sure that you're aware of that and. That it's not my people, your people, they're all our people. We represent everybody in this in this room and in the city, so wanna make sure you're aware of that. And um, my final item here is is it's clear, once I saw the agenda that I was not put on the agenda to. Uh, present a policy specific to the minutes. Uh, Mayor, you gave me your word that I would be on the minutes or on the agenda. Um, and agreed to it and not on there. So. You give me your word, what I don't understand why I can't, why why I wasn't on the put on the agenda.
Okay, well, we will get you on the next agenda.
So July sixteenth?
Yep.
At twenty 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 five, seven PM, I'll be on the agenda?
You bet.
Excellent. Well, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Velasquez.
Well, we have a couple of um events going on this weekend. We have the Fourth of July over at the amphitheater. But I also wanted to make a comment and that is that uh, just recently I I went to a meeting that I was in. Invited to and I I I know that Commissioner Nestor also went uh, uh, attended and that was with the farm workers. And my understanding was that they did invite each of us to the uh, meeting. Um, we went because um, they wanted us to hear some of the challenges they're facing. There was a lot of uncertainty. Our deputy chief Quinn Henry did an excellent job. She came with Captain King and Lieutenant. Torres. Um, and I think that we were able to provide them and give them some assurance um of what they were looking for. And um, the one thing I would like to see is for us as a city to support our Spanish community. Um, I remember I I made a post and I saw you had responded saying that you. Had an honor of going to the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and that they were excited to come to the city of Apopka. And I thought that was interesting because from the meeting that we had at the farm workers with some of the business. Uh, representatives that actually are having that are being affected by what's going on with the. Uh, migrant and immigration issues is that their their businesses are suffering. And so um, I'd like to hear a feedback of how the Hispanic. Chamber of Commerce is excited to come into our city. How did you sell our city?
I I didn't, they just, there was a new business that they didn't want to do a ribbon cutting. They called me, said, would you mind coming? And so. It's right down here, they do safety equipment for like construction sites and they invited me, you know, warm welcome. Uh, as the mayor of Apopka and so was happy to bring them, ha- have them, you know, set up shop right here in Apopka.
Um, I like to see us kind of be more supportive of our farm workers and whole community. Because a lot of them have businesses already here. I actually went into uh. Uh, the internet and said, how many Hispanic businesses do we have in the city of Apopka? It had a part of hundred and forty six businesses, which were whether they're small businesses, restaurants, supermarkets. Um, and I can tell you from the feedback that I get from. A lot of the Hispanics here in our community is that they do not feel welcomed by our community. They don't feel that. We as the city leaders are doing enough to embrace them or to kind of just assure them. That they are part of our community. So I'm just giving you a feedback of what was said at the farm workers, the whole community, and it's not the first time that I've heard it personally. Um, but they just kind of feel uh neglected by us.
Commissioner Anderson?
So I guess I'll just kind of uh, I I guess I wasn't invited. So um, to the, I guess the farm workers hurt community, they had some type of form. Um, but definitely, uh, I do support the community if they have any other events, um. To show my support, if they would send me an invitation, I definitely would attend. So I can't support something that I I wasn't invited to. Yeah, I didn't receive, I didn't, I I didn't receive the invitation, so absolutely, if they invite me and if I'm able to attend, I'll definitely go and support, so. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, alright.
Happy Fourth of July.
Uh, Radlin?
I'll try and be brief. I should have. Should have moved this up during the Public Works uh reorganization conversation, but we do have our new uh transportation coordinator here with us today, Mr. Bill Wharton. So I'll let him come up real quick, just give a brief introduction if he'd like, kind of a little bit of his background and welcome him to the team.
I just want to say I I learned about him on social media. So, welcome to Apopka.
Thank you very much. Good to see you again, Mayor, excuse me, and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here and after watching the service this morning on for the employees, it's. Kind of nice to know they've been here for so long for some reason, so I'm happy to come here and join that. Um, a little bit of background, I've worked in transportation planning out of college. And from there went into city planning and kind of bound bounced back and forth between the two. Um, just recently he left uh Seminole County doing similar work up there. And I more or less stumbled across the ad for the transportation coordinator and went. Yeah, that sounds so good. It's part of part of city planning and part of the transportation part two. It was like two of my favorite things. I really gotta look into this, so. I really appreciate the staff and your and and your confidence in me and I'm happy to be here and contribute whatever I can.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you, sir.
That it, Radlin?
Uh, just wanted to uh. Bring back up the mountain bike park uh proposed, we spoke of earlier in the year at next uh, next week's uh budget workshops. You will see as part of the Recreation Impact Fee Budget, some funding requested uh in our uh for the mountain bike park development. Along with it with that, at the prior discussion, uh. There was talk about the Ridge Self-Storage LLC property up on the map there, approximately twelve point two five acres. A potential land swap. Uh, the city does have a property uh very close by. Eight point oh three acres highlighted on the map there as well. Just wanna make sure uh and and see if I have uh. Uh, council direction to go ahead and get um some appraisals done to get the values. And begin the process of they are interested in a land swap. I think the uh addition of that. Parcel with what we currently have uh would create a very large regional uh mountain bike park. Uh, they are also uh would be open to uh further discussions about how they could participate in the development of this park. Whether it be through uh assisting with uh a parking connection, um possibly some impact fee. Uh, uh credits uh to do some work for us, so they're they're an interesting willing partner. I wanna make sure that. I've got the blessing to go ahead and get those appraisals done and then bring back that information for council for further council direction on whether a land swap. Would be something the council would be interested in.
Wasn't this brought up before?
Yeah, earlier in the year, we brought a preliminary overview of what of a mountain bike park concept.
So when you say. There's an organization or?
No, the ridge, the the developer of the ridge owns that parcel that's highlighted. In red. The city of Apopka owns a parcel to the to the west.
Okay.
Discussion at that meeting when we talked about the overall concept plan of this mountain, potential mountain bike park. We showed some. Options to incorporate that property into the mountain bike park, uh whether that's through purchasing the property. Or the developer would be open and interested in a land swap opportunity. In order to make sure we have the values right, I would wanna get an appraisal of the properties to to make sure I can bring that back to you and give you that information.
I have two questions on this. The, are you able to provide to us the future land use for both of these? And what type of densities both sites can currently get?
Absolutely.
And then in addition to that, what type of appraisal are you gonna be ordering?
Uh, I'd work through our community development department to see what's appropriate for this type of land swap.
Okay, so in this area, historically, the site to the south of the city of Apopka owned parcel that eight acres. We've got, we had an appraisal on that. It was well below market by millions, so I wanna make sure if we're doing this that we're getting the most accurate form of an appraisal done.
Correct, and I'll work closely with Bobby and his team to make sure we're getting the right valuation appraisal done. To bring back to you.
So are we? Are we looking to actually for? To in the budget have another bike park? Is that needed in the budget right now? Are we trying to? Cause I I'm trying to understand why we're even considering this.
So the city, the city uh gained ownership of that parcel. It says Orange County BCC right now, but to the very north of the ridge. Parcel. Earlier in the year, uh, and at the time, there was discussion about it it can't, it's not really a developable piece of property. Um, but it does have some topography for a mountain bike, uh, would fit well for a mountain bike type use. Um, it does have some elevation change. Um, we brought forth uh the group Sorba. Remember that, is that that meeting? It was a very conceptual plan and discussion was to bring it back during the budget season. For this budget year to to see if there was appetite at that point to uh to do this. So again, before moving forward with getting appraisals completed to even explore the possibility of a purchase or a land swap. I wanted to make sure we still had direction, solid direction to go with that. And again.
Can you just remind me how did we leave it the last time?
We left it as I would come back around this budget season timeframe, because there's gonna be, we're gonna need a little bit of funding to. Develop the park if that's the way we go.
Do you have an idea about how much funding we'll need to develop the park?
Uh, uh, I don't remember off the top of head how much we put into the Rec Impact Fee Budget. Um, but that'll be brought forth at the at the meeting and it's in the budget book. I guess I could look it up. I think uh, if I remember correctly, I think it was somewhere around the three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range is what we put in for development. And the and the. Sorba is still interested in partnering on a project like this and.
Five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand.
If you remember, okay, five hundred thousand, okay, yeah. If you remember, uh. During, remember back to that meeting, they they're a totally volunteer group. They've done park properties like this before. They have volunteers that are interested in blazing trails, developing trails. A lot of times they just need the material to do it. Um, they're not opposed to going and raising that donations for those materials, but obviously to speed the process up along. If if we help provide some of that, that'll move the process faster.
My recommendation is is that if we're not sure if we're gonna actually allocate funds in this budget for it and prove it, then we probably shouldn't be spending money on appraisals. Cause they do cost a couple of thousand dollars.
So that's why I wanted to come back before doing that. Um, we can wait until after the budget.
I think.
Maybe that budget workshops next week. I will just let you know, I did speak with the developer earlier in the week uh about this project. They're still very interested, but they don't wanna wait too much longer. Um, because they do wanna develop a a storage area. I think it's a stor- mini storage facility. But I mean, I can certainly if you wanna wait to the budget presentations next week, um, we can certainly do that. And and in that meantime, I can go with Bobby's team and and get some cost on what an appraisal might run, if you prefer. Okay, thank you. Uh, last thing, I wanted to uh just provide a a quick little update on Emerson Park Project. Uh, the sidewalk repair uh. Will be completed by July eighteenth and the asphalt repairs are beginning on July twenty eighth, so the contractor is moving along pretty well on that. Um, just wanted to give you that update.
Andrew?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just as to the the question um proposed earlier uh regarding grant committee members and ethics training. Um, one twelve three, I had I had a chance to look at that. Um, one twelve three, one four two is the the statute that governs the ethics training and. That would not be applicable to appointed grant members under the circumstances and and having looked at the board's responsibilities and so forth. Um, if there's a need for ethics training, the distinction, especially because of the difference between appointees and elected officials and some of the the differing. Um, requirements, we provide training to to all the boards and would be would be happy to if that's necessary. Um, other than that, I just wanna wish a happy fourth to you all and the citizens of Apopka.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, last um, a couple of things you, everybody, I've got a small stack of cup postcards for you. That's um, I thought, well, we wanted to talk about our, you know, the. The uh, the visioning, so it's got on one side is our visioning and then also the other side is the programming we've got coming up. At all of our athletic program. all of our athletic programming and the amphitheater. So just, we're gonna be giving those out, uh, on the fourth, out at the amphitheater. Uh, we will have them around, around town as well. So I'll be sure that, uh, you, you hand those out to, you know, people that are interested in e- e- either, either side of the card. Let's see, the, just, let everybody know, we, 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 we survived the governor's veto and we got a million fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the Apopka replacement of the asbestos cement drinking water pipes. So, um, so we're, we're moving along, trying to get, wanna, obviously wanna complete all getting, uh, removing all of the asbestos pipes along with all of the old galvanized pipes. Um, the sooner we can get that done, the better. Um, next up, the Border Lake Pumping Update. Uh, everybody's got a sheet which has got your, your lake levels. Um, on the, all the lakes which are border, Jackson, McDade, Piedmont, Blue and Page. And, uh, we're all, we're down within about a half a foot of, uh, the, the target elevation, which is the lowest that St. John's wants us to, to go to. And just as a, as a, another point of reference, uh, we've, we've removed six point eight million gallons of water out of, um, this, those four lakes. So or five lakes. So just, which I think's pretty spectacular. We'll probably, we'll be shutting down the pumps tomorrow. Uh, because it, you know, you need to be around watching, making sure that they all work in coordination and you've got where we've shut them down because of some being, uh, over, uh, like, um, Blue Lake being too high. So we have to, have to monitor them. So I said, well, let's shut them down tomorrow and then we'll, we'll revisit. Hopefully don't get a lot of rain over there, but, uh, we'll revisit on Monday morning as to where we, well, about re- restarting pumping. Um, budget workshop reminder, so it's, uh, July seventh, eighth tonight, so five PM right here. Well, also at, uh, seven PM on July ninth, we'll, we'll set the mileage rate. So for everybody that's has an interest in the budget, it's next week, seventh, eighth tonight.
Residents have access to the, to the information online. Cause I know that was a, a concern last year, some frustrations of just not having access.
Yeah, we're working on getting that finalized to get posted, uh, tomorrow, I believe is the plan.
Okay.
And then that's, this is
On your day off?
This is your book that's got all of your, all the details on the budget. That we'll be, we'll be discussing next week. And then, uh, last, we're, you know, July fourth, we're gonna have a big, big, um, big celebration out at the amphitheater. Come on out, got a great band, uh, great fireworks at nine o'clock. So hope to see everybody out there. And with that.